All right, public. Welcome to our public meeting on July 20th, starting at 5:00 PM. As was stated in the letter, we're going to go into closed session right away, but let me read the opening statement. New Jersey Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on June 25, 2020. The public may participate in regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. I never get that. Roll call, Ralph? Yeah, I went out, I ordered that, I didn't do my flag salute, but we'll do a flag salute after roll call. Okay, roll call. Mr. Eriko?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Budowski?
Here.
I think Dr. Chen joined us again, so Dr. Chen, you're there also?
Yeah, here.
Okay. I don't see Mrs. Maroni, or Mrs. Pang, or Mrs. Mattiker, if any of them are on there? No, I'll see you either. Okay, all right.
Shevys actually might be late, right?
Yeah, Shevys actually should be late. Okay, if I could please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty Thank you. Okay, if there's anyone out there from the public, we are now going to go into a privileged session. We're hoping to be no more than 60 to 90 minutes. So can I have a motion to go into privilege? Oh, first Dan, you got to read it? Yes, I just want to let you know that Mrs. Maroni just joined us also. Oh, good, perfect, okay. Okay, all right. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from the meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances does exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Towns of Edison's follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney, fire, and private privilege discussion regarding student matters, settlement of contracts for ETA and EFMMNA, litigation brought on by former employees, ETA grievances, perking unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. And the personnel will be discussing resignations, determinations, retirements, appointments, leave of offices, changes of status, longevity, summer guidance counselors, summer secretarial support, summer driver's ed test administration, summer videographer, coaching appointments, no authorization to approve requests for extended help services. Three, is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public as soon as time as the need for nondisclosure and nonresist, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Thank you, Dan, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to move.
And second by Elizabeth. Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko? Yes. Well, yes. Okay, public, we're going to be going into closed session now. Again, we hope to be back by 6:30, maybe sooner. We'll keep you posted if we go past 6:30. And everyone, I'll see you in the closed session portion now, so you could log off here and go into the closed session portion. Welcome back, everyone. We're back into reconvening, open session. Can I have a motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene.
And Carol, second. Shannon, you're in now? Ms. Pang, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, thank you. I just made a motion and a second to reconvene. Okay, so here's the vote. Mrs. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko? Yes. Okay, we're back in open session. All right, thank you. We got back in a pretty good time. So, thank you for being patient, and we're going to start with all those reports, and Dr. Bragan, take it over.
Thank you, Board President, Eriko. The first thing up we have under administration is the opening of school. I know many people are anticipating what we're going to do in Edison. As many of you may or may not go, they made an announcement today to allow parents the option of remote instruction if they so choose. So that kind of puts a monkey wrench in our works right now, what we were planning. And not that that's a bad thing, but it's that we have to take into account how many students and how many families that would impact. So what we're going to do first and foremost, within a day or two, is develop a survey that's very specific for our parent community to let us know whether your choice is to have their student attend school in September remotely or not. And then once we have those numbers, and there would be a commitment with that as well, that they would be committed to doing that for the entire first marking period. That gives us an opportunity to work. I would like to do a hybrid model or instruction in person. And we also would have to work with our staff members and work with our association president, Mr. Bowden, and the vice president, Mr. Revnick, to come to a consensus on what that in-person instruction would look like. So, the next couple of days, and obviously within the next week or so, there's a lot of work for us to do on our part. You get a lot of information, bring back to the board and the public, and come to a consensus on the options for opening school in September. So that's where we are today. We thought we may have a more definitive answer, but the governor's position, which we're grateful that he changed his previous position, where there was a totally remote option for parents, but we have to get more information and have the exact numbers in order to plan appropriate for our school opening in September. So next up on our list, if we go down, is a couple of we're going to designate for, I'm sorry, stumbled a little bit here, a couple of resolutions to designate. Will Collybus, who's now our Director of Building and Grounds, as our hazardous communication officer, our indoor air quality designated, and integrated pest management coordinator. There are assignments that are typically done by the Building and Grounds, the Director of Building and Grounds. And Mr. Collybus was appointed at our last meeting and working on September 16th. So he needs to take on those positions. On-site clinical services will be awarded to Rutgers Behavioral Health. We've used them for several years now to provide supportive services to our students, and we want to renew that contract as well. The school calendar is being revised this year. We had a week where the where no students that were going to attend, we had a full staff development for staff in October. But that is also the date where the PSA is scheduled, for students to be in session for us to do that. So we moved that to October 22nd. Again, this is pending, and if that's calendar change, we're making regardless, but we're anticipating that PSA, ESAT date taking place. We're not sure that will actually take place, but we want to be prepared if it does. Underneath there, you'll see the ratification of ETA certificate and not certificate agreement, as well as ratification of the facility managers agreement. That was discussed in privileged session, those will be shared as well and voted on. Board President, Eriko, you want me to go down to curriculum and keep going?
You have meal, Ralph.
You went over item one, personnel, labor relations and personnel report?
I did not.
Okay, it is just to let, you know, everyone know in the public, it is now published. So, we did discuss it in closed session, and the labor relations you just discussed in G and H.
Okay.
All right, yeah, go down to curriculum and instruction.
We have the field trip approvals that we have. Again, there's one field trip approval where the student is actually being transported by their family. Because it is an FCLA trip, we want to make sure that it's board approved. Professional development documentation are a few there that if we are able to have those professional development sessions onsite, they will take place. If not, we at least budgeted for them, and we planned for them, and they've been approved. So the staff members can attend. If they're canceled, obviously that wouldn't take place. Our added district placements are also there for board approval, as that typically happens. Some, there are some changes that take place throughout the course of the school year, and those are there as well. I think that's all that I have. Mr. Board President?
Thank you. Dan, finance? Okay, first item is the approval of the minutes from the June 15th and June 24th meetings.
Can we ask questions for Dr. Bragan for his part, or we'll wait till the end?
Yo, I'll wait till when we bring it up for a vote, Jer.
Okay, okay.
After the public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so after the minutes, we have the Board Secretaries report for, for May 31st. You have six pages of the A4 and 48, and you have the A149, the Treasury School Moneys report also for the same period of time. Following that, we have the resolutions for tonight. The first one's a transfer of funds through May 31st, and I tried to make sure I incorporated as much as I could for June, even though we're not closed out for the year yet, because we're still paying for some of the June bills that haven't come in yet. So there might be a small one in August for, through June 30th, but this would cover most of it. And you'll note that a lot of the money's going into building repairs since we weren't in school for three and a half months. We focused on trying to do repairs to the buildings. And in most instances, we used a lot of the money that we would have normally spent on substitute teachers and things like that, and we used that to fund this. We also have security supplies, $235,000 for the new radios we're buying for the district. It's a security plan that we've had. We also have to purchase quite a bit of things for sanitizing, and security supplies, and also thermometers and things like that for, in the health department. So you'll see transfers into all those different lines, and a lot of it has to do with COVID, obviously. So we did use some of the monies that we would normally have spent on other items that were left over at the end of the year. That's what, in the amount of $1,420,000 total. Item number two, we are getting the Federal CARES Act money in the amount of $968,000 for us, and 107 for the non-publics. Of the 107,000 for the non-publics, we would like to do the same thing we do with the Title I money, and let the Ed Services Commission actually handle that for us. And to do that, we need a resolution appointing them to take care of the title of the CARES Act, non-public funds, in the amount of $107,000. That's what number two is. And number three is actually the submission and acceptance of the CARES Act funding grant. It's a total of $1,68,000. 107 of it goes to the non-publics, and $960 goes to us. We'd have the board approve that. Item number four, we have outstanding warrants and salary checks that have been outstanding for more than a year. And every year, we write those off, so that's what number four is. You're writing off some of the old warrants and salary checks outstanding for a long time. And even if they went to the bank with them now, the bank wouldn't cash them because they're state-aided, we'd have to just replace them at this point. Item number five, we went up to bid for our food service equipment repairs. We've got three bidders. We actually used the first two, Abel and Jay Hill before, but we got a brand new one that came in a lot lower. Malachi Mechanical. And they met the bid specification, so we're recommending we give it to them. We never used them before, we'll see how they work out. At this point in time, they met the spec, so we have to give it to a little bidder. Then number six is the exterior spot for the Woodrow Wilson modular classrooms. And if you remember, in a lot of our discussions, we estimated it to be, based on the estimates we got from SSP, to be about $250,000 for this. We had the bid out there, and we did get three bidders. The lowest bid was $495,000, and that's, that's using regular hours as if the kids were not in school. And if they were in school, then they got to do it off-hours, it's $520,000. So Dr. Bragan and I discussed it, and we did talk to Mr. Eriko and Mrs. Conway. And we felt it's double, it's double the budgeted amount, so we're recommending we reject it. Item number seven through 31. We have Educational Data Services that does our bidding for us for many, many areas. And these are, they usually come in in June, we just got them though, so we have to put them on the July meeting. They actually do the bidding for us, they award it to a little bidder in every instance, and they actually actually send us electronically the, all the information so we can actually type, have the purchase order prepared electronically without having to type them all out. So that works out very well for us, so you can see it's, it's number seven through 31 are all of those bids from Educational Data. Item number 32. If you remember last month, we went to, from RFP for our auditor, and we only had one, one response, so we rejected it, and found again. This time, we did get responses. Right now, we had the one that we have currently came in at $58,000, which is the same it did the first time. And the second one was from Wilson Company, and they came in at $80,000. So I talked to Dr. Bragan, and I talked to Mr. Eriko and Mrs. Conway, and they recommend we go with the lower of the two, and go with PKF O'Connor Davies. Item number three, 33. This is a federal cooperative that used to be called US Communities. They merged with OmniA. Because of the fact, we don't have a resolution where the board approved us using OmniA. I wanted to just get it on record that they are now an approved federal cooperative purchasing system that we can use. And they do still incorporate the US Communities in there, but I wanted to make sure that OmniA was in our minutes because I didn't want the order to seek something from OmniA and say, I don't see anything, any approval from the board. That's what this is for. Item number 34. If you remember last month, we talked about the health insurance consultancy knocked this commission down by about half a million dollars. Well, they revised their premiums for all of our health programs. It came out to seven tenths of 1% on the health and the prescription, and 1.1% on the dental. So this is actually saving the district about a half a million dollars in total premiums. Item number 35 is the non-public security monies that go to the non-public schools. We have to approve the POs before they, before they can be sent out by Ed Services Commission. Item number 36 is the same thing, but it's the non-public technology funds, in the same amount. We have number 37 is the bill list for the month of June, $25,375,042. And the last item is the transportation report, we have one. It says special education, extend the school year program, wrote to success, gave us the best quote at $2.45 a day, and $60 for the aid. That concludes my report, Mr. Eriko. Thank you, Mr. Mashad. Again, I'm going to open it up in a minute to the public to ask questions, and then any board members while we make a motion to vote, and second the motion, any of you could say anything you'd like about any of these items. But I do want to mention one thing, is people are typing in questions on the board here. I can't type answers back, otherwise it interrupts the meeting. So if you have questions, and obviously you're online with us, you need to come and raise your hand when we get to the public portion, which will be about 30 seconds, and ask those questions if you like, and we will answer them if we have the answers. Okay, so at this point, the public, just let you know, you have six minutes. Please ask all your questions. And then when you're done, we will respond. We're not going to go back and forth, but we will respond to your questions if we have those answers. So let me get into our participants, see whose hands are raised. Let's see. The firsthand I see is Pavon Napani. If we could let him in, Mr. Barker?
Yeah, hello?
Hi, Mr. Napani, hopefully I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
Yes, thank you.
Your question?
Yes, my question is, I guess, it's a two-part question. We know that the goal is to keep our teachers safe, as well as our students healthy and safe and healthy, but we also want to foster great learning, right, that Edison is known for. So two challenges. One is virtual schooling, we know that the last time we did it, it was a great effort. But we do need virtual teaching, not just virtual learning. The kids are not able to cope up with the learning through just assignments and virtual doc. They need to be provided instruction by the teacher, especially the younger students. So the question is, how are we going to deliver virtual classroom instruction if there is virtual schooling? That's part number one. The second is with respect to the hybrid model. If with the hybrid model, we need to have complete transparency and accountability on the daily sanitization procedures. You know, even in things like, in places like Home Depot, there are sign-off sheets and checklists for who cleaned the bathroom, right, for instance, as an example. So if we don't have that, we cannot make a decision as to, you know, how safe the environment is. Part two is, how do we know who's going to be allowed in the classroom? Who's being tested? What about temperature checks? And part three is, what's the plan if a teacher gets sick or a student gets sick? Is there, are we going to quarantine the entire classroom? So, and I know that I'm not alone on this, we, I'm in constant communication with about 100 other families in Edison. And I know as parents and teachers yourself, you're also concerned about this. So the question is, while you're putting together this plan, how do we, as parents, make sure that all of these issues are addressed, and we, we then can make an informed decision?
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to let Dr. Bragan address those, and thank you, Mr. Napani. And Dr. Bragan will answer you now.
Awesome. Yes, thanks for the question, Mr. Napani. Regarding to your first question about the instruction, it would definitely be more robust than it was in the spring of last year. As you know, we quickly transitioned to the online learning, and we are much more prepared for that as we move forward. And so we're working, we've already worked with our staff development teams and making sure our teachers have the professional development and the training to enhance that instruction to be at the caliber for which Edison is known. So that's already being worked on. Regarding the sanitation of buildings and things, we are in a virtual environment, and we're going to be hybrid back and forth at some point, or actually onsite instruction. The new Director of Building and Grounds is already working on a manual that's going to be implemented across all the schools to, for enhanced cleaning and different things to make sure those sanitation efforts are taking place, like you said, that there's proper sign-ins, we're checking the bathrooms, making sure the door handles are clean and things like that on a regular basis. And that information will be out there as well. Regarding entering schools, we're in the process right now of securing thermal cameras for temperature scans as people walk in the doors, and then we could identify people that have masks on, as well as people that have a temperature that's higher than, you know, we would normally set it at the CDC recommendation is 100 degrees point four. And then we would check those people, both staff and students, further, and decide whether they were needed to be isolated and/or sent home. Regarding if somebody was sick, we would follow the CDC protocols for quarantine, which right now would be, we would have contact tracing in place, as is required by the state, determine who that person had impact with and was in close proximity to, and then we would implement the 14-day quarantine for staff, as well as students that were exposed to someone who tested positive. So those are the things, and then final to your question is, when we get all this solidified and put pen to paper, we will publish it, we will put it out there for public, so people can make an informed decision.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Okay, next up, Anita.
Hi.
Hi Anita, your full name, please.
Um, Anita Amarna.
Okay, your question?
Okay. Thank you, the Board of Education, for all the work you do. I really appreciate as a community. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, just to get a sense of the people, one of the residents started a petition just to find out whether they like remote learning or the hybrid model, and I just want to tell you, just in about 24 to 48 hours, you have about 825 signatures. So you have the will of the people, you have the support of the people for remote learning. And one of the things which, which the parents have a concern when it comes to remote learning is how to replicate a classroom teaching to remote learning. And what best is to ask the kids? We just went around and asked the kids, and the kids wanted to see the teacher, like, you know, just like a regular session. And they feel that in a Zoom session, we are just posting assignments, and they want a better interaction. So that is a feedback to you when you go to the remote learning session. And the second thing is, do we have the bandwidth and the equipment if we have to, you know, transition to a good remote learning system and replicate a classroom system? So that's the two things. And people were really concerned when you go to the hybrid model, how are you going to do social distancing? How are you going to wear masks for an extended period of time? Because the plan that you get to a hybrid model is, you need to have an extended period of time by the time the vaccines come and the general mask gets the vaccine. So how, you know, and there are parents with preconditions. There are parents who have texted and interacted saying that they have preconditions. There, there are elderly people living in their homes with preconditions. So, I mean, what is the risk factor when you're taking a hybrid model into consideration? Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Dr. Bragan?
Anita, thank you for sharing that information and that you have that survey with the over 800 signatures. We do appreciate that. We actually surveyed our parent population, and I think we had about 7,200 responses, so we do take that information and, as well as the student information about replicating, replicating classroom instruction. As I said previously, we are working on that now to ensure that what we offer to our remote students is robust and of the high caliber instruction that we would expect from Edison. When we transitioned in March, it was quick to get it up and running and get it done. We obviously have more time now to prepare for those kind of things. And we want to have our students to have more interaction and have an environment that is more closely replicated to the classroom, as well as having that interaction between students and staff virtually, as well as students amongst each other. Regarding the cleaning and sanitation of this floor, we're going to do our best to make sure that we ensure all the practices that are, that are highlighted in the CDC protocols, as well as the State Department of Education guidelines. And we are doing that, we're developing with our Building and Grounds Director a manual for each building facility manager to use with their staff to make sure those protocols are adhered to, as well as screening individuals when they enter the buildings, as I said previously. We're doing our best to help ensure a safe and secure environment for all those that attend. As I said earlier, the governor came out with guidance today where parents, if they so choose to educate their children remotely, they will have that option. So those that are, have compromised situations, whether that's family members or themselves, can elect to have that option so they wouldn't put themselves at risk. And as with most things regarding this virus, I'm sure this will evolve and develop as the year unfolds and progresses. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Just to remind everyone, we're talking about the resolutions only, so I just want to make sure for the people in waiting. Next up is Amy. Amy, your full name and address, please?
Hi, yeah, my name is Amy Ryan, I'm from 08817 Zicoob. My son's in Woodrow, in Woodrow Wilson.
Gotcha, thank you, Amy.
No problem. I wanted to ask a question about the road back that the governor has put out, and the use of paraprofessionals. It seems that the governor is allowing some expanded roles for paraprofessionals to help students, particularly special needs or those with other special requirements to expand their permitted duties. And the district thus far has said that they are not going to accept any of those changes into the district because it conflicts with the current special education rules and allowances for paraprofessionals. So I just would like to know how the district is going to reconcile that difference? Has there been any requests from the state for clarification, or any other thoughts about the use of powers in these expanded roles?
Gotcha. All right, thank you, Amy, I'll have Dr. Bragan address that.
It's a great question, Amy, and it's something that we've been working on with Dr. Conklin. In a hybrid or remote learning situation, and as you said, the governor alluded to in the road back, and the plan that they relaxed some of the requirements, allow the paraprofessionals to do a little bit more than they would have done traditionally. So we're going to embrace that model, we're working together with Dr. Conklin to see that we can do that, and have the paraprofessionals play the role which they so critically do, which is supporting instruction for some of our most needy students and under the direction of the teachers. So we want to do all we can to replicate that, whether that's virtually or in person in the hybrid model. And we are taking all that into consideration. Absolutely.
Thank you, doctor. Next up is, I think, Ruth. And if I could get your full name and address, please?
Yeah, hi, I'm Pyle, actually, I'm using my husband's phone. We go to the James Madison Elementary School intermediate.
Okay.
So one of the things which I had concerned is for my family, probably remote learning is the only options. I have kids with high health risks. So one of the suggestions which I have, especially for, you know, like, remote learning, maybe you can do some, you know, group classes with the kids, where she gets a feel of her students or classmates. So initially, last time, what happened was, it was just one-to-one with the teacher, assignments were given. So kids tend to get lonely too, you know, it's a long time, they are in home too. So that was one of my suggestions, like, teachers stay in for longer time, and maybe a lunch period or some other classes, like maybe the band classes, or maybe the extras, where they can do group, you know, do a Zoom group class together. you know, do a Zoom group class together. So meet their fellow students and you have to talk and make friends.
Okay.
Get a feel of actual class, you know? And last time what happened was the teachers used to give the assignment, come over for 30 minutes and that would be the max. Not that it wasn't great, I'm not, you know, criticizing anyone here. But you know, if we could have longer time with the period, with the class and the students and the teachers so that they get a feel of the classroom.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll just respond a little bit and I'll let Dr. Bragan respond. I, I think, you know, with the amount of time we had to get ready back in March, we, we have obviously seen where we have room for improvement. And I know Dr. Bragan's on top of it with his staff and supervisors and academic officers. So, Dr. Bragan, you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I think Ruth, that's great feedback that you gave us and try to make it a more robust instructional process. But also for the lunch and band and special kind of relaxed areas, if we can allow our students the opportunity to interact in those environments virtually as well. I think that's a really good idea.
Okay. All right, next up is Mr. Sparschel Patel. Address, Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel? He's not unmuted.
He has to unmute himself.
Oh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, my name is Sparschel. At 6905 Hannah Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Bragan and President Eriko for answering our questions. A couple of questions I had were, will the, will the teachers be required to be tested? Like frequently before they begin work if the hybrid model is in place? Secondly, transportation routes, if certain students pick hybrid model, others want virtual schooling, you know, will the routes be affected? And I'm sure they will be, but are we capable of, you know, cleaning the vehicles and, you know, picking up the students that require transportation? And lastly, certain kids might need meals daily. Are we going to be, you know, packaging the meals for them and sending it to their homes? You know, especially the ones that require, you know, they rely on these meals.
Okay. Thank you, Sparschel. Dr. Bragan?
Great, great questions. And the one question someone asked before, I want to get back to, I neglected to. And my answer was about the infrastructure, the bandwidth and things like that. If our school is capable of remote instruction. And, you know, we have a great technology officer in Mr. Barker. And we've been working on this for the last six months. So our infrastructure to handle the bandwidth and things like that is definitely in place as well as we're actually looking at enhancing some of the devices that our teachers use to hopefully make that more robust as well. As far as testing staff members, as I said, anyone that enters the building, we will have a temperature screen. And if anyone that could potentially be higher than normal, they will be screened individually and pulled aside. Other than that, I don't know if there's parameters with HIPAA regulations on what I could actually have staff members do. Last thing, we're working on that now. Mr. Michelle and I are working with our bus vendors, putting protocols in, in place for spacing of students on buses and cleaning procedures and things like that. And we are taking direction from the CDC as well as the State Department of Ed and how best to do that and facilitate the cleaning, both during runs and in between runs. And we're working on that as we do now. And with the meals, I want to say that we had a, Pak Hassan kind of took a lead role in that our chief, our director of security and helping coordinate those efforts with our chart wells program. And we weren't remote in March, kind of, you know, in, in a two days notice. And we, I think we did an excellent job in getting meals to our students that were more secure. That will continue. I haven't, we have not fleshed out what that would look like for those students that are remote learning and are eligible for free and reduced lunch. But I assure you, we will make sure those students' needs are met. And we will try to get them the meals in the most expeditious manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Next up, RB. If I could have your full name and address, please? RB?
He's muted.
I think they have to unmute on their side.
Correct.
Hi, RB? Hello? Took her hand down or his hand down. Next up, oh, I'm going to regret this one. Mr. Di Pasquale. Is it Di Pasquale or Dis Pasquale?
After this many amount of time I've spoken, you haven't got my name right?
Well, it's Di Pasquale. Okay, I just don't want to, you know, I don't, maybe the Italian version is Dis Pasquale.
No problem. So I just wanted to bring up something about the remote learning. I know it was a quick put together over the, you know, past few months. And I, I heard a lot of positive stuff about the teachers and, and the parents were happy, you know, some were happy with it. But just the other night, and I've heard this from a few people, with special needs kids, I know there were some instances where the teachers pretty much just like sent emails with work to the parents or to the kids. And they really didn't do any of the Google Meet classes. Luckily for my kids, most of the teachers did. And the, you know, some of the parents weren't happy that they got some of this, this work and there was no real instruction from the, from the teachers. So what, what my question is, is that how, how is the district going to keep, you know, keep the teachers accountable to make sure that if remote learning does happen, that, you know, it's not going to happen again where just work is going to be emailed and it's like, okay, you know, this is what you need to do. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that after a month or, I don't know, halfway through the, you know, the quarter, if you could maybe send a survey out to the parents again? Or just, you know, a way for, for feedback? Just so, you know, everybody's held accountable for what, what is occurring in the district? And I know we're a large district, we have a lot of teachers. And so I'm, I'm just curious, you know, how, how we can make sure that, you know, stuff like that doesn't, doesn't fall through the cracks.
Okay. That's a good question, Mr. Di Pasquale. So I'll have Dr. Bragan handle that one.
Yeah, great, great question, Tony. And some of the things that took place during that time, as you know, when you do something quickly and you transition, you just want to get it up and running, right? You want to get started, you want to make sure we're doing what we can to meet our students' needs. But we did recognize there were some deficits in some areas and there's, you know, probably the hardest needs for all of us to meet on a regular basis are some of our students with special needs. In an in-person environment, sometimes it's really difficult with all the supportive services and the support personnel we have in place. We know those are some of our most needy students. So we're going to pay particular attention to that. We're going to make sure that we're doing all we can to help those students be with academic success. And it's not an easy task, but it's something we could definitely work together with, with our administrators, with our teachers to provide those supports and make sure the instruction is robust to help make sure they're meeting the goals that are listed in their individual education plans. So we will definitely monitor that more closely. And our expectations to start the year remotely are going to be very different than when we had a transition on a two days' notice. So we will definitely take all that into consideration.
Thank you. Next up, I believe is Ms. Negron. If I'm correct, if you can give your address, please?
Negron, it's where, and my daughter goes to Menlo Park Elementary.
Thank you.
So one of the things that I'm wondering about is for remote students, for parents who choose to keep their kids at home, will there be any flexibility in the schedule for parents who still either have to work a few hours out of the day that would be the normal school hours? Will they be able to submit assignments later? Is there going to be some sort of schedule or will there be more flexibility for that? I also wonder about testing for students who are remote. How are the exams going to be given, submitted? Is there going to be some sort of online portal? Are we going to have to email the teachers? You know, scan and email them the test? And I know my daughter, when she was in school, she struggled with math a little bit. And the teacher had her working with another teacher during the school year, during like, you know, free times out of the week to get extra help. If that's identified in a student with remote learning, that's doing remote learning, how, how can something like that be facilitated for the students to get extra help? Or to even identify that they need extra help?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bragan?
Yeah, those are some great questions, Ms. Negron. You know, regarding the scheduling, I think some of the schedules are going to be synchronous and there'll be some asynchronous, which means that sometimes there will be timeframes where we are scheduled to meet as a group in person at the same time. And then there will be times wherein the assignments and the, and the instruction will take place asynchronous. Maybe there's a video to watch and the assignment will be submitted at a different time. Regarding extra help and things like that, I think those are all the things that we have to look at. Have we provide the supports outside of our traditional classroom that we would for either a basic skills instruction or an in-class support model or things like that? And I do believe as we have more time to prepare, more time to train our staff, more time to put the supports in place to make the learning, as we had said, it's been a recurrent theme, if the remote is the start of the school year, we want it to be as robust as possible to replicate the classroom to the greatest extent possible. Again, for that social environment for our students as well as the instruction for them with our teachers as well. We've been working on this in the summer, we're still working on it. And we're going to continue to work on it and refine the process for as long as we need to provide the remote instruction to our, to our students in need.
Thank you, doctor. Ms., Mr. or Mrs. Guha? G U H A, address, please?
Hi, this is, I'm sure, this is 791 Drive Edison.
Thank you.
So I was typing in actually, and first of all, you know, it's a great thing that you're doing, great effort, a lot of considerations that you are, and you know, you're taking in all the comments and I appreciate that. It is really challenging and you know, you cannot make everybody happy, but enough to take those best course. So first question I had was, there was a survey that was sent out, sent out, I think a couple of weeks ago, about how many, whether the parents want online schooling or remote learning or in class? Do you have the results?
Okay.
The second question is, it's actually, it's actually more of a suggestion. You know, more face, more face time with the teachers, with the students discussion, to students. The teachers did a phenomenal job last session considering the short time they had to prepare. But if the, the classroom can be mimicked, except doing it online, that will be a much, you know, much better. I think some, some others have already echoed the same thing. This can be possible mostly in, you know, for the theoretical classes, but some of the labs cannot be done online. But again, there are many subscription based tools and even free tools online which can substitute the labs. And they can be done, so you know. We played with.
Who's doggy?
That's not mine.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Guha?
That's all, I mean, you know, you're doing a great job and keep us apprised. And hopefully, you know, you can take a best decision considering everybody is, you know, everybody in mind because there are.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Students who really need online schooling as well.
Okay. Thank you very much for your support and your questions. Dr. Bragan, you have the survey results?
I do. If I do this right, I could pull them up right now and share with everyone. Okay, of the parent survey, I'll go over it quickly. And thanks for reminding me that, that was my plan to share that tonight. So I apologize for not bringing that up earlier.
Can you make it a little larger? There you go, good, perfect.
We had 7,165 responses. You know, we have about 17,000 students, a little bit under that. And the questions, they were pretty straightforward, but we only asked very small questions, you know, shortened to the point, you know, am I comfortable sending my child to school in September? As you can see the results there. Close to 70% were not comfortable. If eligible for transportation, would I allow my child to ride the bus? And you can see the results there as well. The majority was.
Almost half, no.
You know, and, and many didn't apply to as well, right? They weren't eligible for.
Right.
Okay. Would I, I want my child to wear a mask or a face covering in school? Overwhelming majority of, you know, 5,444 responses were yes. And then what level does my child attend school, right? So the majority of the responses were from elementary parents, children attending more than one school, high school and then middle school. And then there were a variety of comments that we had, actually thousands of comments. So the majority of the results from the survey did indicate that if given the choice, 70% would rather have their children attend school remotely. So I'm glad that we're going to be able to have that option as the governor allowed us to do that today.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Next up, Shrevatsin. Address, please? Hello? Hello?
Hello, yeah, hi.
Hello, your address, please?
Yes, my name is Rekhan Araseman. I have a junior in JP Stevens. I'm just using my husband's computer. My question, okay. Thank you very much for the quick switch to online learning that we did this year. I really appreciate that. And my question is regarding remote learning. So many parents are feeling safe with remote learning. But since there is the hybrid model too, my question is, what happens if, God forbid, the teacher falls sick with either COVID or something else? And my concern is that do we have, if she has to take time out and, you know, like 14 days of quarantine or whatever, do you have a substitute teacher who has the capacity to continue with the instruction? Because I'm afraid that the hybrid model may interfere with the full functioning of the remote learning or instruction for the kids. And my other question is like, if such a thing happens, then will you be shutting the whole school down? And I'm concerned that this hybrid way of doing might affect the instruction. How will you provide instruction to all those people who are doing remote learning if such an event does occur?
Okay, thank you very much for your questions, Dr. Bragan.
The great question. You know, one of the things that we always try to do is have high caliber substitutes available, you know, when our, when our teachers are sick or they need to be absent for whatever reason. And, and as much effort as we put in getting high caliber substitutes to fill in our classes when they aren't there, they're not as good. No, no one is as good as your, your child's teacher. They're certificated teachers, many have years of experience. Many are, if nothing else, extremely comfortable with the students in the class and know them better than anyone. And even the most high caliber, highest caliber substitute is no equal to a teacher. So we do our best, but no, that would suffer. If somebody gets sick, we do have substitutes, again, but it won't be the same. We will follow the CDC protocols and we will have contact tracing. So there, as it's, as I understand it now, when somebody be positive, or we even think they may be positive, we would do the self-quarantine of those that were intimately involved with that person for 14 days that could impact instruction and could impact students within that classroom if they did in fact meet in that hybrid or online, in-person model. So those are concerns, they're valid and we'll deal with them as they come up as best as we can.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Mr. Napani?
Can you hear me?
Yes, your address, please?
Yeah, Juan Wendy Court. So my, I guess my question was around the manuals that are going to be developed. When do we expect to see those manuals completed in terms of sanitizing procedures? And B, more importantly, will we as parents have transparency in how they are being implemented on a daily weekly basis? Not that there's going to be a lapse or we expect people to not do their jobs, but we just feel a lot more comfortable seeing that they are being implemented and there are checks and balances to make sure they are implemented.
Okay. Thank you for those questions, Dr. Bragan.
It's a good question. The plans have to be shared with the public 30 days in advance at the start of the school year. So we will definitely try to get those in everybody's hands, the plans, by August 1st or August 2nd, I think our anticipated start is September 2nd. I think August 1st is a Saturday, so most likely that Friday or within that Monday is August 3rd. As far as accountability, at, at the end of the day, we're all accountable to the public. I am directly accountable to the full Board of Education and all employees are directly accountable for me, to me. So we would implement those practices and make sure they're being adhered to. But as far as parents, having direct accountability for whether their schools are being sanitized by our sanitation, our custodians or maintenance people, that, that's not going to happen. That goes through the administrative team, that's the protocol. And if we say we're doing it, I assure you that we're doing it and we'll make sure that our staff are adhering to the protocols that we've established. But that's our job as administrators.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Anju? Anju?
Yes, hi.
Full name and address, please?
Yeah, Anju Mohatra. My daughter goes to James Madison.
Yeah, Anju Mohatra. My daughter goes to James Madison Primary, live at zero eight eight two zero. So thank you. Thank you, everyone, for addressing the questions. I did have one question. Have you thought about doing outdoor learning? I know there's been articles about outdoor learning through previous pandemics. I know the majority of parents, children do want to do remote learning. But if a hybrid model does go into effect and parents do want to send their children in about using all the open school grounds, more gym classes, more science classes, more reading outside, even math outside. I know you have to take into effect the weather conditions here in New Jersey versus let's say somewhere in California or Florida. Has then has that been thought about? Because we know like when you're outdoors, the virus like dissipates, you know, with the air. It's not lingering in an enclosed building.
True, true. Dr. Bragan?
We we have considered that and actually as early as this afternoon, we were having conversations about securing. For lack of a better word, like those tents that you sometimes see at people's weddings and large scale events where we could have expand our outdoor spaces so that we could maybe utilize them in inclement weather and things. So it's definitely something we're considering. We're taking a look at. We haven't gotten to the point of the viability or the cost for such endeavors, but we're definitely looking at doing that. And to the greatest extent possible, as you said, weather permitting, when we can do that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the public comment. Now we're going to go to voting. And comments from the board of the board members. So as I always do, we're going to make a motion and second it. And then I'll ask for comments and I'll go by grouping. So the first grouping is personnel. Labor Relations Section A. So if I can get a motion, Carol? Who else? And Fal, thank you. Questions, comments now. On number, number five, item I or one, Roman number one. Okay. Dan, roll call.
I I have a question on. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I can't see your hands. So just speak up.
Yeah, no. So I want I just had a question on the opening. Is this the right time to talk about it?
About what?
The what Dr. Bragan talked about, the school opening?
Uh, no, that's be that'll be later.
Okay.
Well, actually, you could talk about it on the next administration, the next item.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Sherry. All right.
I I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Jerry.
So I have a comment. So. Let me fire up this personnel report. So. Okay. So our last meeting, I expressed my concern with district hiring process. So I thought the administration went back and and redid it. Things will be different. Dr. Bragan might disagree with me on this one, but the result is exactly the same. So I really don't think that the the process was 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 clean. And the hiring process in the district has been a went through a lot of issues in in the past several years. I thought was a news new administration coming in. Things could change a little bit. So I was a little disappointed to see that, you know, the issue was brought up at the last meeting and the result is still the same. Okay, so I guess the the what I have seen is and also the the wood on the street in in the district, the hiring process is not about what you qualify your qualification is is more of, you know, who you know. Okay, we can have like certain family members have like four or five family members are working in the district. Does it? They could be, you know, very qualified, but I'm surprised that, you know, one or two those particular family is 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 the only one that's getting all these jobs. And the other concern that I have and I spoke with Dr. Bragan is the population of the teaching staff is not reflecting of the our residents population. And and I know there are a lot of folks who are not applying for the teaching position which needs certificate, but I'm not talking about some other position more like secretaries and so on. And there's a district in the past year or so has heard a lot of secretaries position. And there have been quite some people who contact me and they say, hey, what are the openings? And and I said, hey, go to the the app 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 track and and look for those positions. And so there's a secretary position. I say, apply, just go apply. So they sent me the resume and I look at them. Of course, I didn't intervene with with the process. And they they have college degrees. They have colleges in in India. They have college degree in in China. And these people, they have colleges in other countries. Okay, and these are the people who don't even get called into interview at all. Meanwhile, we are hiring these secretaries and I knew that the recent a couple of them were some so-and-so's daughter who works in the district and so-and-so's sister. So I was really a little bit disappointed with the the hiring process. I hope that, you know, with our new superintendent and the things will change. So with that said, I still think the process of the supervisor of athletics is 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 still questionable. So I'm going to vote no on that. And I hope the other board members can go with me to vote no on this as well, because I still think this this is not fair.
Okay, thank you.
And just there's another thing about the I I we talked a little bit about this grant writer, whatever the title is.
Right.
It's it's a very expensive position and we hope that there'll be some.
Accountability.
Accountability. So at the end of the year, we're going to take a look at it, how much grant this person has brought in compared to the salary, right? So the title one grants we have been, you know, the title grants we have been going on with our existing staff. We've been getting those. So first, we have to make sure that those title grants will pass the audit. So we don't push charge.
Move money.
To to our to our district, which you can see fifty thousand dollars paid back to, you know, we had to charge back to our account because we did not follow the 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 right procedure. And also I like to see additional funding that this person will bring from private sectors. And hopefully have a tally at the end of the year and we'll look at it, you know, is this position worse? It's it's a, you know, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar job. And plus the benefits and stuff, that's be another thirty thousand dollars. So we're looking at a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this position. And it has to justify that this this position is really worth it. So that's my my comment.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other comments before we vote?
We're President Erika. Can I respond?
If you like.
I would. You know, Mr. She, we disagree on that and you called into question my integrity, my professional integrity, of which I've worked thirty-two years in this field. To say that the hiring process was compromised, I I take offense to that and you're entitled to.
Sure.
I respectfully disagree. And the fact that the results came out the same. I'm looking at that the first time around, there was the right right results came through. We actively recruit. We have complete place for all of our jobs. We don't hire family members. That's not our mission. That's not my mission. I have one mission to do the right thing for the right reasons to best help our students, our community and do it at a at a the cheapest cost possible. I'm committed to that. I give you my word on that. I gave this board my word on that. I don't deviate from that. And as far as trying to recruit people of color, people that reflect our community, I do that actively. If you look at the people that we're hiring, even on this agenda, they are not people that look like me. That doesn't happen by accident. That's what we're actively trying to do. And I personally find offense that it would be said that this process was corrupted in any way because I'm the person in charge and leading that process. And I give my word. I give my thirty-two years of experience in this field. That there's three things I hold value value more than my integrity and my word. That's my daughter Samantha, Danielle and Lindsay and nothing else I value more. So I I respectfully disagree with your opinion. We adhere to the highest of standards and as long as I'm the superintendent, we will continue to do so. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I I knew you were going to disagree, but that's that's fine. We we agree to disagree, right?
That's right. And we did respectfully.
Yeah.
Okay, Dan, vote, please.
This is for the personnel report.
Yes.
This is Manaker.
Yes.
This is Batowski.
Yes.
This is Conway.
Yes.
Dr. Chen.
No to the Edison High School Superintendent, uh, no, I mean, I mean supervisor of the athletics and yes to everything else.
Okay, thank you. This is Tang.
No, the athletic director and he has done everything else.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mr. She?
Yes, to everything. No to Edison Athletic Director, Athletic Supervisor, Athletic Supervisor, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mister Patel?
I I didn't hear you, Fal. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Yes.
Mister Erika?
Yes.
Okay, so carried. Everything carries. Department Director six six three vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number two, administration A through H. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, and Elizabeth, second. Comments, Shibi. Go ahead.
So I just had a question, Dr. Bragan. You said that a survey would be sent to parents whether the student would be coming into school or not and that decision. So my question is what about first, how would this survey be sent? Would it be through parent portal? And how about parents who don't respond to the survey?
It's a really good question. Madigan, we haven't decided that, but I did hear some feedback that it might be best to go through the parent portal as opposed to the email blast that we went through for the last Google form. We have to work really hard to make sure we get all of our parents to the greatest extent possible because we really need an accurate number in order for us to make those decisions moving forward. So we're looking to put this together in the next day or two. And I would imagine I'm going to try to incorporate all the vehicles possible to get the information out for that it's parent portal, whether it's email blast, maybe even put it on social media. But then we have to make sure we only get, you know, the responses to our parents too. So I'll work with our tech guys. Mister Barker and his team and we'll figure that out. But it's imperative that we get the information quickly as well as accurately and from as many parents as possible. So if you have some ideas in that too, Mrs. Madigan, please email me and we'll take that into account as well.
Okay, and just one follow-up question to that. Will the parents have a a full notification on what the plan is so that they can make an informed decision?
They will. The first one's going to be whether they want their children to go remote or not. I won't have that ironed out a hundred percent by tomorrow. Once we get that information, we will have all the other because that's going to drive how hybrid in person would look like depending on the number of students. Everybody knows that our schools are extremely crowded and that no space is an issue for us. So to adhere to six foot distance and parameters and things like that. We need to know exactly the number of students that are parents that are going to request their children.
All right, thank you.
Well, will the survey include a caveat saying that you would need to commit for like a semester or?
Yeah, that's a great point to that we talked about that, that it would have to. If you're going to have them educated remotely, we need a commitment to do that for the I would imagine we're going to do it for the first marking period, not necessarily semester. Because I think this is evolving and, you know, God willing, hopefully there's a vaccine in the near future that may change some of this dynamic for us. But yeah, there would have to be a commitment because you can't say that I'm going to have my children educated remotely, then change your mind come September. When we planned accordingly and making sure we can adhere to the social distancing parameters.
So maybe the word survey should probably include that so they know.
Absolutely. There should be. I would even go further if they commit to that. That it's a sign off kind of electronic signature that they commit to their children or child will be educated remotely.
And just another question. So if a parent does not respond for whatever reason, maybe, you know, they're just not connected or something else is going on. So how would you make the determination where that kid goes? Does that kid go remote? Does that kid come into school? Like, will there be a protocol to kind of? I mean, I know you said that to send ideas, but what if we have a bunch of people who really do not respond?
I would do, I I mean, if they don't respond, the assumption is that they would be coming in person. We use that as the assumption. We'll make sure our numbers that you show up won't be. So but, you know, we'll we'll do everything we can, you know, it's not, wouldn't be the first time I drove to people's homes to get their information. So we'll do whatever we can to get that in. If if we can't secure a commitment either way, the assumption would be that they would come in person. So this way it won't negatively impact our numbers. And if they don't show up, then we have less than we anticipated, which will make the social distancing easier.
Can I? Can I have a question?
Of course. I see you. I see you, Elizabeth. Great, Jerry.
Okay, so Dr. Bragan, so you said that you're going to send out a survey in a couple of days. Was that survey just say you're going to be up the out or 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 there will be more meat to it? Because the reason I'm asking is the first survey that we we sent it out. The first question is, are you comfortable sending your child to school? And some other people have not decided yet, so there was no choice of that. So they they probably didn't respond. And the other question I want to ask you, even for the first survey, did we look at the people who said thirty percent of those people have who have no issue with sending their the kids to school? Are these people more on the high schools and middle schools or elementary school? Or have we sliced and diced the data a little bit more to 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 see that?
Great, great points, Mr. She. And we purposely just wanted to get that one out to get a a benchmark on on the figures. We didn't break it down by the particular students, what grade level, what school they're in, which would be helpful. But we wanted to get an idea how many would be comfortable coming to school. And as we got, you know, from that information, the majority, seventy percent, were not comfortable. So the next survey coming out, and it needs to be fairly quickly, the first question or two is going to be related to do you choose to have your child attend school remotely? The next question or questions, depending on the children, be what grade level and what school? Because we need that information. The third question, again, this is I envision it, the team, we talked about it today. This came out around noon time. So we talked about developing it as we prepared for tonight's meeting. In the next day or two, what is the information we want to know? We want to know who wants to go remotely, what age, what school the students are at. And then as Mrs. Patel said, the parents that choose that have to commit to it. If you have to commit to the remote instruction, so then we could look at the parameters for the students. That other thirty percent that may be comfortable coming to school. How can we facilitate that in a socially distanced and appropriate manner? So we got a lot of work to do in the next couple of days.
Yeah, so so the thing that you you might, the response might be slightly different for elementary versus high school kids. So so I hope that you can slice and dice the data. I think the data you have right now, you can still look into it because people tell you there which school, where they're coming from, you can slice and dice and look at that to maybe get you some some directions. The other thing is, you know, if we're talking about a hybrid learning, so there will be a portion of students going to school. So if if will the survey say, hey, this this might be a hybrid, you know, model? Would you be comfortable of 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 sending the the kids in the school? There might be, you know, if you say, hey, the hybrid model is only like, say, you know, eight or ten students in a classroom, let's say eight, so you can meet the this this six feet distance. Then people might have a slightly different opinion. And also the other thing I want to talk about is, you know, if we have a a hybrid model, there will be families that the parents cannot afford to be with the students all day because they have to go to work, right? Let's say my work, I have people who work in the lab. Right now they're going back to work. They cannot be with with their with their their family. The kids do the experiment in the lab. So will we be providing some sort of option for those parents who can send their children in all the days, right? So I know we're providing a option for people to opt out to do the online, which I agree with you. The people needs to to be committed to that online until the the once they made a commitment. But you know, for those families who cannot afford that, let's hope we have that option as well, give people the choice. And even for the people who choose to be in the in-classroom with a hybrid model, something might happen. So things could change. So we should allow them to move from the hybrid model into the online learning, but you cannot move it from the online learning into the in-classroom because that will disrupt the the planning. I hope those are things that we will be planning. Those are the all the options. We leave it open to all the families to choose instead of, you know, putting them into only limited, you know, online or not online. So I hope that that is the we're going to do. So I hope that, that is the, um, we're going to do. So Ralph, this is just for that, just for administration, right? Finance is different?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's just for, uh, uh, you know, we're not up the curriculum and instruction yet. No, we're just doing number two, administration, A through H.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else would comment? Elizabeth?
Um, I just have two comments. Um, I would truly hope that we would be able to get an, an accurate enough number so that we can truly see, you know, who is going to be where. But at the same time, for the parents that are choosing the remote learning, and we do have the hybrid or the complete remote learning, depending on where at the, um, state administration goes, we need to set some kind of schedule. And we need to see who will be able to follow that schedule because I know from speaking to so many teachers, not only were they working starting at seven o'clock in the morning, but some teachers were going to almost 10 o'clock at night. And that's not something that they'll be able to sustain for a, a full year. So another part of the question is, will the families be able to work along with whatever schedule their kids are having in any way? Like for instance, can you give, uh, two hours in the morning to FaceTime with the classroom or with the teacher? Uh, can you do this? Because if they're all remote and some are hybrid, we're not going to have two teachers, one teaching remote and one teaching in the classroom. And if it's all remote, the teacher is going to need to teach when she needs to teach, and we need to get all the subjects in. And in order to do that, we're going to need to really have, uh, a decisive schedule going. I know that was one thing that was not taken into consideration. They did a miraculous job for what they did so quickly. But we're going to need to get more schedule savvy if we're going to be opening because we don't know how long it's going to be. And I, I like the idea of, yes, you are going to, um, do it remote. Yes, I will go along with a hybrid as long as it takes because we don't know how long this is going to take. How long? Is it going to be three months? Is it going to be the whole school year? It will make a difference, but we need to know where we can begin and how we can, how much we can depend on the families following the schedule in order to get it. Because I know some of the parents did complain that they didn't get enough FaceTime with the teacher. Well, in order to get enough FaceTime with a teacher, we need to have a schedule so that they know exactly when they can get that time with the teacher.
All right. I agree, Elizabeth. Yeah. And I know the teachers did an unbelievable job, you know, with the short notice we had in March. They did, you know, wonderful things with the students. Um, I, I only see it getting better uh, with the planning that Dr. Bragan and his team is doing. And coming up with a solid schedule now that we know we're going to be doing this. We just hope, you know, the governor, uh, makes a final decision very soon so we could put a final plan into place. Because right now it's mixing and matching right now. And, you know, everyone's hearing all the rumors out there that the governor, if it starts upticking, will close us down very quickly like he did the restaurants. So, um, once we figure that all out, I'm confident in, in the teaching staff and the, um, paraprofessionals and everyone else, the principals and supervisors and everyone else that, uh, it would only be better than what we had from March through June.
Ralph?
Yes.
I, I would like to make one other, um, observation. Um, for, for those of us who've either gone to or taught in J.P. Stevens, um, you know that when the weather is warm, when you hit that second floor, it's deadly. And, and it's that way in Edison High, it's that way at Woodrow Wilson. I'm sure it's that way at most of the buildings that are two floors and don't have air conditioning. I cannot imagine what it would be like for teachers and students to sit upstairs in those hot boxes with masks on. This is a deep concern to me. And also those kids and the teachers need to be hydrated all the time.
Couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more. All right.
Very quick comments. Uh, we are developing a online teaching curriculum because a lot of the parents, uh, you know, I, I know a lot of teachers did a good job. There's also some concerns with certain parents and we heard it today at the meeting. Uh, we do, doing a online curriculum because that's, that's slightly different than our traditional curriculum. I know we have the curriculum developed for all these subjects, but those are in-person teaching. And this is online. Are we, are we going to do something that, to, to adopt for the, for the online?
We, we haven't, at, at this point, adopted a specific curriculum for online learning, although we're trying to adopt different pedagogies and instructional models to achieve our current curriculum in an online format. It's something we might want to look into though, if this is going to.
Okay, because the time is not outside. We only have a month to go.
It's going to be crunch time. The next, uh, two to three weeks is going to be crucial.
Yeah, because if we, if we don't, if we don't push for it, you know, because we, you know, I hate to say it, we, we don't, we don't want to see, you know, um, yeah, before we only had two, two, two days to come up with this. And now we have some time. So let's just have a, a plan B for online learning, um, just in case. You know, let's not wait till the governor makes the decision, then we do this. Let's, let's have a plan B.
Good point. Good point. Carol? You have a question, Carol? Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, we're voting on administration, A through H, A through H only. Can I have a motion, please?
I already have a motion.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay. We did, already did that. Okay.
A is not, A is not a resolution.
No, it's true, but we're just, the comments were made. So it's really, it's really B through H.
Yeah.
So now there's no voting on the school plan. There's no voting on the school.
There's no plan?
No. Yeah. So there's no plan. We're not voting on anything tonight in regards to a plan.
And Mrs. Madiker?
Yes.
Mr. Budowski?
You're muted.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Uh, yes, for A through F, but I recuse myself for G and H.
Okay. Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Erico?
Yes.
So Carrie?
Thank you. All right, next item, number, uh, three there, curriculum and instruction, A and B. I have a motion.
Motion?
Shivi, I saw, I saw your hand move, Shivi. And Elizabeth. Uh, comments, questions on curriculum and instruction, A and B?
Are they really going to have a field trip on August? In August?
Yeah, Dr. Bragan, I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up too.
One person.
That's one thousand.
A bunch of kids? Okay.
Yeah. They're being transported by their parents with the school sponsors if they wanted to get it board approved.
I see.
Gotcha. Elizabeth, go ahead.
Uh, under, uh, professional development, I just have a question. Uh, there's fees for different people going for professional development services. If that turns out to not happen, will that automatically become remote and then we still pay for it? Or will they cancel?
In most cases.
At this point.
If it gets canceled or they don't go, there is usually notification timelines. They have to meet in order to cancel it. But for the most part, they've been canceled themselves. And then, and all we're doing in this case is just approving it just in case they go. If they don't go at all, it doesn't hurt anything. But if you, if they do want to go and we don't approve it, then we got a problem.
But what happens if it's remote? Is it still?
If it's remote and, uh, what, if they cancel, you mean?
No, if it's, if it's remote and they go, do we still pay?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, because, uh, I know I take, I, I registered for a couple of courses myself and I got an email that they're going to do it remote. And, uh, so it's the same price. They don't charge any less. We just don't get lunch out of it.
You should get a refund for that.
I should, and I eat a lot, so.
Yeah, but one of them has hotel expenses.
Well, then you won't get that.
She can't go on vacation.
No, I know. And no trips to Florida. All right. Any, any other questions on curriculum and instruction? All right, Dan, roll call.
Mrs. Madiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni? Mrs. Maroni?
You're muted, Mrs. Maroni.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Erika?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Uh, number four, pupils slash special services out of district placements. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Jerry. And foul. Thank you. Comments? Seeing none? Roll call?
Mrs. Madiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Erika?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And lastly, number five, finance, A, B, and C. Motion, please.
Here, Ralph.
There you go. Uh, Mrs. Conway and Mrs. Maroni. Comments, questions?
Yes.
Jerry, go ahead.
So Dan, I'm just looking at the finance resolution, uh, for number two. What are the services the Ed Service Commission, uh, is providing, the Middlesex, uh, uh, service are providing to us when, when it comes to, um, you know, this, uh, CARES Act service? What are they providing?
They are, uh, there's requirements that they have to have consulting with every one of the non-public schools. They do that for us. They, and then they actually coordinate and process the purchase orders.
Okay. Are we paying them for, for that service or?
They, they get 5%.
They got 5% of any bill they submit?
5% of the total amount, 107, yes.
Okay. So the, the number two is the, uh, that's number three, I'm sorry, submission acceptance or CARES Act grant. These are the money we're, we're getting, right?
Correct.
So we're getting a million dollars. Maybe more than that.
Yeah, 960 of it is ours and 107 goes to non-publics.
Okay. So we're, we're getting close to a million dollars. All right.
Correct, yes.
That's good.
Yeah, very good.
Okay. So the, then the, the others are all the Ed Services. Let's see, 30.
These are all the coordinated, uh, bids from Ed, Ed Data. They go up to number 31.
Okay, yes. So, uh, question for number 32. This is our auditor. Um, P.K.F. O'Connor-Davis.
Yes.
That is the one that they bought, uh, the, the previous, uh, what is it? Uh, the Morris, what is it?
Hodgson Morrison, correct.
Hodgson, they bought Hodgson Morrison? So it's the same.
They merged it, yes.
They merged with them. Okay, so it's the same auditor.
Yeah.
Okay, so they made a boo-boo last time. We want to know that, right? Are they gonna? I, I actually still have not heard, you know, what, what's the end result of that? What, what happened? With, 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 with the, um, uh, the stuff that we, we, we had an issue with. Uh, I hope they're, they're going to do a, a better job this time because, you know, we did talk about in closed session. I'm not, I can't, I'm not going to talk about in public. But I still have not had, heard an answer to that. This is, this is what, two months, three months now?
We haven't heard a thing about it from, from any of the, from anybody we appealed to. We're having a lot of problems with pension fund. We're having a lot of problem with the IRS. We're having a lot of problem with everybody trying to get even through them. Uh, but in the instance that we're talking about here, uh, if you remember, there were only two recommendations last year, and one of them was about the bank reconciliations. And that was the issue with this, that the bank reconciliation wasn't completed. And they couldn't review it because, uh, it wasn't ready at the time because we had our assistant BA doing the payroll at that time.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to the details, but, but the thing that, you know, yeah, because those, those are closed session discussion. But, but the thing that, you know, uh, for the monthly reconciliation, I, I think, you know, we saw it, that was in the audit report that, uh, that was a recommendation from those people who ordered us for the title grants. And we also saw that was the, uh, recommendation from even the auditor, Hodgson Morrison. So are we, are we doing this on, uh, right now on a, on a monthly basis? So we don't, we don't want to see that happening?
No, we, part of my corrective action plan was to give the, uh, bank reconciliations to our accountant. And she has been doing them on a monthly basis. They are ready.
Okay. All right. So we are doing it. So, so next, the audit report, we, we should not find that, that, that's a recommendation because I seen it in twice.
Right. Yeah, plus that employee that was here before is no longer with us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not, I'm not going to the details on that one, yeah.
Yeah, no, exactly. So I think Dan is straightening that out.
Yes, go ahead.
Hey, who else has a question? I'm sorry.
No, no, uh, uh, Hope wants to say something.
No, but you, you stopped. I was, I was going to ask, you were about to cross the line.
Um, it's just, it's just, it's just harder when you do it on Zoom.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Dan, roll call.
Mrs. Madiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Erika?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. So we're done there now. I'm going to go into committee reports. If I can have finance facilities from Mrs. Conway, please.
Uh, I'd like to say that this was, it seems like a long time ago when we had this meeting.
Yeah, right.
Uh, the date was, uh, July 7th at 1:00 and it was done remotely on Zoom. In attendance was Elizabeth Conway, Ralph Erika, Shivi Persaud, Madiker, Dr. Bragan, and Dan Machad. Uh, the first thing was discussed was the Water Main diversion project around the modular classrooms at Woodrow Wilson uh, that will be starting, uh, in July. The district has successfully moved the storage trailers and storage shed to a new location to allow Middlesex Water Company to begin the trenching for the new piping system. Uh, the bid for the brick facade for modular classrooms at Woodrow Wilson Middle School was due on July 15th, which we heard about, and might be awarded, but will not be at tonight's meeting. The five roofing projects are ready to begin. The existing stone is being removed from each building to prepare for the installation of the spray foam roofing material. All five projects are due to be completed by August 31st. The committee also discussed the status of the transportation contracts for next year. Several of the district's bus contractors have accepted the 60% payment offer and agreed to renew their contracts for the 2021 school year with the state permitted 1.7% increase. Unfortunately, at the time, the district's largest contractors, Dapper Bus and Barker Bus, have not accepted the 60% payment offer and have not committed to next year's renewal yet. If they do not agree to renew soon, the district will be forced to bid all of their routes to ensure that we have transportation arranged for the opening of school. The committee reviewed the paving projects that are scheduled for the summer. They include parking lot repairs or repaving at Edison High School, John Adams Middle School, James Madison Complex, and the Early, um, Learning Center. Several curbing and sidewalk repair or replacement projects are also scheduled for the summer. The committee discussed the district's plan for modifying the 2021 budget following the state aid reduction of $2,966,942. The administration is recommending reducing the Lincoln School addition allocation by that amount. In this way, it eliminates the need to cut staff and door programs which negatively impact the students' education. The $9 million Lincoln School allocation would be reduced to $6 million. The committee would need to further discuss the Lincoln School project to see what the feasibility of construction is, could be. The district's health insurance premiums have been reduced due to the reduction in the Health Insurance Consultants Commission. The revised premiums will be approved tonight, uh, at the. The revised premiums will be approved tonight at the board meeting. Bragan discussed some of the anticipated costs for reopening the schools in September while following the state and federal guidelines. Some of the costs discussed were installing cameras in each of the classrooms, installing thermo monitoring machines at each school, and changes in transportation costs due to reduced ridership protocols. The meeting was adjourned at 2:24. We got all that in in an hour and 24 minutes.
Very impressive.
Very impressive.
Very impressive. I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, so in the last item, so they say that we are buying some additional things to, for the opening of the school. Is that in the budget or has it already been budgeted? Or this is some additional cost? Or some of them we already purchased?
Yeah, some of, some of it we already knew about, but there are some other things that I wasn't aware of that we will have money for. We can use some of the money, we are actually using some of the money for the CARES Act, for the additional Chromebooks we need for the students. So, that money will be available because I did a budget for some of those Chromebooks in our budget. I use that for some of these other items.
But these are the things that was not part of this CARES Act that we submitted, right? Will we be able to submit to, you know, state or federal, whatever, to get additional funding for these kind of stuff?
To my knowledge, we're only entitled to the amount of money they allocated for us at this point in time. If there is money, additional monies available at any point in time, we'd be jumping on that immediately.
That's a great question. That's a great question, Jerry, because if we need to do what we need to do, it's only because of the situation that's happening. So, they really should, I don't know if it's, is this federal money or state money, Dan?
Federal.
So, the federal government would have to, you know, bring up another package, I guess, a CARES Act package so that we could apply for, you know, these Chromebooks or cameras or thermo machines, things like that. So, hopefully, they do.
So, so the money we can receive was not based on what we actually spent? It's based on how they allocate to us? Or that has something to do with actually we spent on the Chromebooks, that close to a million dollar?
Has nothing to do with what we spent. It was based on our Title I funding.
Ah, I see.
And they based it on that.
Okay.
Okay. Good to know that.
We do, we do have some savings, as we had mentioned earlier, on the transportation costs for the routes they didn't deliver, and, you know, at 60%, there's some savings there. I know Mr. Barker, the Chief Technology Officer, also sold some of our outdated Chromebooks, and we received a profit of almost $240,000 for that. And I think he had an additional $100,000 for some even older machines. So, some of those monies can be used to offset some of these costs. So, we're trying to be very vigilant with the money there, but also try to make sure the environment is safe for the students and staff.
Where did he sell those stuff? I have some old stuff I want to sell. Couple bucks on it.
I don't know the exact place to share that information. We searched it, and, you know, we, I think we cut out the middleman, and we saved a significant amount of money.
Yeah. So, I'm working backwards on this one. So, the other thing, I look at that, you know, because we got a cut on a state aid of $2.9 million, so we're reallocating some funds from the Lincoln School project to that fund. So, on the next line, actually, the, is the insurance premium. So, as far as my understanding, we saved probably $2.5 billion on insurance premiums, and then budgeted it. The budgets that was approved, the insurance, just health insurance itself, is $42,950,000, right?
Right.
And my understanding is the insurance premium is somewhere close to 40 million. So, we have a saving of about 2.5 or 2 to 2.5 million dollars. What are we doing with that money? Now, with a state aid reduced, you, 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 we add, okay, now we have extra money. What do we do with that? Are we thinking about giving back to taxpayer or how are we doing this? We do have extra money, is that you budgeted, Dan?
I budgeted 1.51% in this year's budget for, for, for health and workman's comp. A million dollars of that, 44, 850 is for workman's comp, and $900,000 of it goes to health insurance waivers to the staff. So, I don't have it, I don't have anywhere near $2 million savings here.
Well, I'm looking at the three items. I'm looking at the health, I'm looking at the dental, and I'm looking at the, the, what would you call it? The prescription, yes. So, that, you add them up together, that's $42,950.
Right.
So, the insurance that we, we got quoted is somewhere around $40 million, if I remember correctly. Of course, you know, you have people who drop it, who you hire new people. It's, it's, you know, off a little bit. So, we have savings there. So, what are, what are we, what are we doing there? Even if you don't have a $9 million, you have, let's, I don't, you should have some savings. And we can see the bill next month, you know, how much it is, based on people's enrollment. What are we doing with the extra money?
Anything we have left over at the end of next year will be going at the free balance. It goes into the free balance, and we use it as tax relief, just like this year. We used $5.8 million of our free balance as tax relief this year. I'd be doing the same thing this year. If that money flows into our free balance, I would be putting more money against the, for the taxpayer relief next year.
Okay. So, we cannot give back to taxpayers this year because we know it's, it's extra? Because this year, everybody's gonna hit pretty hard. Even, you know, $40, $50, that will help. It's a good gesture on our part.
Our budget's already been approved by the state and by the county, and we can't go back.
Yeah, but, yeah, but then last time, when we changed it, when the state gave us, you know, the, when Dr. O'Malley was here, the state gave us $1.6 million, and our budget was already approved, this is extra, so we gave it back to taxpayers.
Right.
So, we, we could do it if we wanted to.
At that time, the state gave us the additional monies, and they gave us the ability to go back and modify our budget. There, there's nothing to go back to at this point in time. I even called them and said, what about the $3 million we got cut? And I go back and modify my budget. They told me, no, use that as a mid, mid-year budget adjustment.
Okay. Can we, do you use this extra as a mid-year budget adjustment? The extra money that we received from the, the insurance premium?
Well, the adjustment is increasing or decreasing your revenue and your expenditure, your appropriations. It's not, it's not giving it back to the taxpayers. It's just adjusting what we already budgeted.
Can we make a call to whoever, the county soup or the county BA or whoever it is, and get an answer from them? Because to Jerry's point, it is tough out there. And if we could, you know, do something, you know, you know, I don't know. And again, if you could look into the exact savings we're having in insurance, because the numbers are different, you know, what Jerry thinks and what you're telling us. So, if we can get that exact number, and then we can see what we can do with it once you call the county BA or county superintendent.
I'll give him a call, sure, I have no problem doing that.
I'm just wondering, can you give back money before you know you have it? If you have a certain amount minus the two other prices, and you're left with other money, do we know for a fact that we're going to have that extra money now versus later?
Well, I think that's the Dan's point. He says usually what we do if we have extra, and I'm talking health insurance now because Jerry brought up health insurance, we then throw it into free balance and then could give it back for tax relief in the next budget.
So, that's why I'm saying, do we know now we're already going to have it? Or is that something that you would find as the year ends?
Well, you go with a budget, right? If you have something extra you didn't spend, that's the actual you have, so.
Right, but we won't know that until the end of the year.
Yeah.
Fiscal year.
May I make a, just a clarification again, just to remind everybody?
Yes.
Well, one, it never hurts to make a call to the county. The second is just a reminder, this current budget number only goes through September 30th.
Yes, I know. In September, in October, they're gonna come back, yeah. So, we just watch, if it's kept the same, that we, we have the extra money our head.
Yeah, so, right, so my comment, so my comment really is, it's two parts. Can't hurt to call. Two, this budget is only a stopgap budget. The governor hasn't even come out with his budget recommendations yet. Obviously, a lot of that is going to depend upon the borrowing and where that winds up. And that's in the, that's in the road back.
Good point. All right, Jerry.
No, there are a couple other items I want to go back backwards. So, it was very grateful to see that we are repaving all these parking lots because especially, you know, some of the parking lots in horrible shape. John Adams is like a huge pothole when it come out of this. So, so my question is, do we have a plan of when we're gonna pave these parking lots? Because there are other parking lots that's in bad shape. Do we have a plan that we can tell the staff and the parents, hey, these are the plan that we, next year, we're gonna get to this school, the following year, we're gonna get to the following school? So that they can see that something is coming, you know, on the horizon? Do we have that?
We, we have a long-range facilities plan, which includes all that stuff. But now with the new B and G director we have, I already talked to him about that. He wanted to know what our plans were, and we're gonna sit down and actually go over that with Dr. Bragan.
He has a long-range facility plan, including, you know, adding all the buildings and stuff. And I'm just talking about parking lots, so it's a different scope. So, I hope that we could have a smaller scope, not that long-range plan, you know, because we don't need 10 years to pay all these parking lots because they're, they're in a bad shape. So, we hope that we have something. And then talking about, you know, Mrs. Conway's point about money saving, do we know if we have money? Because this is going to the number three items, is the roofing project. For the roof, we planned $2 million. And with the, the new spray-on roof, the estimated cost is $1.5 million. I hope by the end of August 1st, we'll see a real bill to see how much the actual cost is. Again, definitely, there are savings over there. From the get-go, it's already $0.5 million. So, this extra money, I hope that we can bundle it with the additional saving we have with the health premium, and look for some ways to help the taxpayer a little bit, even $30, $40. You know, I hope that we're definitely looking into it when it, when it comes down to that point. Then this is the last question, I'm sorry, I'm taking up all the, all the, all the time, is the bid for the brick facade of Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I think the, when we had the meeting, the, they told us it's somewhere in the $350,000 range, it's not $250,000. So, what is the plan right now, since the bid came out much higher? Are we gonna rebid or we're gonna leave as it is? What, what is the plan from the committee? And what is the plan from the administration when it comes to this facade?
Dan, I think you were gonna make a call and find out itemized pricing?
Yeah, he told me when he called, the lowest bidder, which was Spartan Construction, he said there were three major things, but they wouldn't get into a lot of details. Said if we rebid it, they don't want to give out their secrets. But the brick facade, they said went from $40,000 to $100,000. I'm not sure what the reason was. He wasn't 100% sure. He thought it might be trying, because we're trying to match the brick. I don't know why that would cost another $60,000, but he told me it went to 100. He said it was a problem because there, there's a mechanical unit, a brand-new one on those units that have to come off to put the facade up, and then they can put it back.
That's air conditioning, right?
Yeah.
That's the only thing outside, that's all the AC units hanging out outside.
Right. So, that was another issue. And then evidently, they're putting up a gutter system that's, it's like, must be made of gold with the amount of money they put into that. You have to put a gutter system up, but it's, it was very, very expensive. But I said to him, I can't see, I can't see that being $200,000 more.
And also landscaping and bollards?
Yeah, the bollards with the, and we were gonna have to put some kind of planters outside there also. That was also part of it.
So, the cars don't bump into it?
Correct.
Yeah. Can, can we just, you know, put it in different phases so can split the cost instead of, you know, in one shot? You know, the bumpers, whatever you want to call it. I mean, we put in a budget next year. And just, yeah, I just want to make sure we don't have gold, you know, gutters, you know, for, for, for the, for the, for this modular classroom, because it's not, it's only five classroom long. So, yeah, it shouldn't be that much money. So, we are, we are gonna rebid, okay? That's good.
Yeah, I think Elizabeth will have a meeting within the next couple of weeks. And maybe we could discuss and look at what we actually sent out, Dan, item by item. And if we want to take the planters out, or the bollards out, or the gold gutters out, you know, we could then rebid it with what we really want, which is basically the facade to make it look good.
There's our three designs.
Well, that's why we were waiting for the bids to come back to make those decisions.
Right. Then we have to wait, yes. And then also, Dan, didn't you say it's more expensive if they do it on weekends and at night?
Yes, yes. They gave us a lot of the bid, if you saw the, the, his price, lowest bid was $495,000. And if it's on hours, it was $520,000.
Okay.
Well, if the schools, if the schools close, they can have all the time to do it.
That's true. We're totally virtual.
Go ahead, Shivi.
Yeah, I just want to add something here. I mean, I would not, I would not be in favor of, you know, building a facade because it's kind of a cosmetic change. And we don't know what kind of expenses we'll have next year. And I would just wait until next year because I just feel like if we spend all this money, and then, you know, God forbid, next year, we get even a bigger state, state aid card, then maybe we should just, and just because this is cosmetic, I mean, if this was anything related to safety, I would absolutely say, go ahead, you know, do it. But since this is cosmetic, I would just wait until next year before we really go out and bid. I said this at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting as well, that.
Yeah.
Just. I think, yeah, I think it, you know, I think it's a little bit more than just cosmetics because there's, you know, right now, it's, it's metal. So, if you don't protect, these things get rusted, and it's gonna cost a little bit more down the road, so. Yeah.
Okay, we'll discuss it, we'll discuss it in.
Leave to the, leave the finance facility committee.
Okay.
At cost, we need to revisit it to see what is truly essential.
Correct. Okay, thank you, everyone. Any other questions on the finance of facilities? All right, policy, Fal.
The Policy Committee met on July 17th at 10:00 AM remotely on the Zoom platform. In the, in attendance were myself, Beth Maroni, Carol Vadaski, Shiva Prasad Madiker, Attorney Hope Blackborne, and Dr. Bragan. The committee went over mandated policies that were provided by Strauss Esme. The committee spent a lot of time discussing, in particular, the Federal Families First Corona Response Act, which the board is required to adopt. The committee discussed that this act, particularly as it pertains to the leave and payment during the initial 10 days, needs to be discussed with the entire board during a board meeting on July 20th. Finally, the committee decided that all the mandated policies that were discussed should be put on the agenda for a first read during the second board meeting in July, if possible, or at the latest in the August meeting. The meeting adjourned at 11:15 AM.
Thank you, Fal. Any questions for Fal? See, Mrs. Conway, that's a nice short report. All right. Upcoming meeting. We obviously have the July 30th meeting. Dan, what time was that gonna be again?
5:00.
5:00. Okay. So, July 30th is our next meeting at 5:00. We'll go right into open session, right? We don't need to go into closed session?
Yeah, we only have two items right now on, on the agenda, and that's the, for the thermal monitoring machines and the bus routes.
Okay.
We also did advertise that if anything else comes up between now and then, you know, we can also act on that.
Okay, good. And want to make sure the public knows that. And then the next meeting after that will be August 24th, it's a Monday. Right now, we're gonna still do remote based on what's going on. So, again, we may start at 5:00, but we'll advertise the correct time. So, depending on how much we have on that agenda, we may start at 5:00 if it seems like it's gonna be a long closed session. So, that's the only thing, two things I have. Board member, open discussion. Let me start with Fal, if anything. Okay. Let me go across my screen, Carol.
Okay.
Okay, Elizabeth?
I think I've asked enough.
Thank you. Yuna?
No.
Good, okay, Shivi?
No.
Really? Okay. Who else is there? Jerry?
I'll be the last. Because I do have questions.
Okay. Well, it's comments section, no questions.
Comments, yeah, comments.
Okay. Beth? Where'd Beth go? I think we lost Beth. I don't see her.
Yeah, I don't see her.
All right. She must've got tired. All right, Jerry, you're last. Oh, no, Shannon. We lost Shannon too, I think.
Yeah.[1776.56]
Uh-oh, we're down to seven, Jerry, you're up, you're the last.
Maybe I spoke too much, so.
Yeah, they got, they got tired. Their ears were bleeding, maybe their ears were bleeding.
Yes, yes, so, um, just to re- to reiterate, uh, a comment from the audience, Amy, about the paraprofessionals. Um, I think moving, moving forward when the, when the new school starts, um, we need to better use our, our parish, cause they did provide a lot of help, um, during the, in the classroom. And I don't think that, that, um, they have been utilized, um, you know, during the past, you know, three months. So I hope that we can look into it and, uh, uh, I hope our, our board attorney was gonna tell us this was a new guideline, cause I, I did glance through, is that, um, they can help, uh, the students even without the, the teacher's presence. So I hope that, that my interpretation is right. And last time when we, when we had that discussion, uh, we could say that only certified parents can be with students. So, um, um, I, I think that that guideline has loosened up and that's a better use of parents. And the other thing is Dr. Brigham mentioned, I, I'm just gonna hold you of your words, is that, uh, we can do a live stream, uh, in all the buildings. So we can, uh, let's say JP Stevens, the Edison High Schools, um, for all those classes ongoing. If, if we're gonna go to the hybrid model, our bandwidth is strong enough to do a live stream, uh, for the, the, the students that is, uh, uh, online. I just, that was my concern when I sent you the, uh, the email earlier, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, I just hope that, that, that this is not be a bottleneck moving forward.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, oh, thank you, Jerry. All right, lastly, I'm just gonna have a, a couple of comments. One, I would like to thank all the board members, all eight of you. Um, this has been some difficult times. I know there's been a lot of questions and phone calls amongst us concerned with about how we're gonna do remote learning, how we're gonna mix in in-school learning. And a lot of you have come up with great ideas and suggestions. And also, parents, I do look at Facebook. I don't comment because it's my personal page and I don't wanna mix business with personal. But I do take those comments and I speak to board members, I speak to Dr. Bragan. And I think we're doing a great job communicating with each other and hopefully that continues. Again, I would like to thank, uh, the teachers, again, for what they did from March through June. It was a very difficult time and I think they did a great job. And that goes for the, the powers and the bus drivers and the cafeteria service people. Everyone from Suf to us, custodians, facility managers, whoever. Uh, the entire district pulled together and got through this pandemic from March through June very well. Um, and lastly, I'd like to thank, uh, the unions and all the committee people that were on the negotiating teams, um, for negotiating with us fairly. And it wasn't always easy, uh, but it was done. And the only way you know you got a good deal on either side is both sides weren't very happy. So, um, I think everyone is, uh, okay with what they got. Uh, you know, obviously, they believe they should've got more, we believe we should've got more, but we came to a mutual agreement respectfully. And we worked it out. So I'd like to thank all the unions, uh, you know, Jeff Bowden, Matt Nervneck, um, the facilities managers, uh, Mr. Scurrell, Shirello and all his team. So thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we're gonna go to public comments. Um, and let me get my list up again, remember six minutes? And you could talk about anything you'd like. And I need names and addresses, so let's see, oh, we got some hands up, Mr. Bowden. Jeff, Mr. Bowden? Oh, you gotta unmute yourself, Jeff. Mr. Bowden?
He's still muted, it looks like.
Mr. Bowden? Can I come back to this, can I come back to Mr. Bowden and go to Ms. Campione?
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Campione.
Hi, uh, Sue Campione, you don't know my name either after eighteen years in the district.
Oh my, see, see, there's a D Pasquale and you got a Campione, so it's a Campione and a D Pasquale, no E.
Can you hear me?
We, you, we say the E anyway.
Hold on, Jeff.
Just, um, one suggestion with, um, the surveys to the parents to do, have all the principals do a robo-call to the parents so that the, um, because generally, if they don't check their computers, they do answer phones or get a message. So they would know that the survey is there to go in and answer, so that was just a suggestion. Um, the other thing, um, I'm just really concerned about, and I, I know it's, it's hard or impossible to, to track, but, um, families that may be going away before, soon before school starts to places like Florida, South Carolina, Texas, um, supposed to be quarantining for fourteen days when they come back. So is there a way that we can at least send a reminder out to parents about travel? Um, and right now, I mean, I don't know if that's going to change by the time we start school, but the numbers are not good right now, so, um, just some type of reminder about traveling and, um, not doing it within the two week span that school's gonna start, especially if they are not going to be remote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campione. I just go, I, I just wanna say one thing about the, uh, the self-quarantine. I believe, and this is as of a week or two ago, that if you do travel to those banned states, it's recommended that you self-quarantine. It's not mandated or required by executive order or law, as far as I'm concerned. It's not like New York City or New York State, where if you don't, you can get fined and arrested and so forth and so on. So we need to clarify that too with our, uh, local leaders and see if it's mandatory. And, you know, again, how do we track those things? So, uh, good questions, Ms. Campione, not Campione. This, uh, Mr. Bowden, now we got you.
Can you hear me now, Ralph?
Oh, we can.
Yes, oh, good, all right. A little trouble with the technology. I just wanted to once again thank the board for ratifying the contract as we did the other day. Uh, we feel, um, we feel that now, um, association and the teachers and the support staff can continue seamlessly into the new school year, which is extremely important. And we believe the board was very generous to us and we thank you for, uh, supporting us. And we look forward to trying to work out this, uh, situation with the new school year and be ready to teach the best we can for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden, appreciate it.
Thank you, no problem.
Mr. D Pasquale?
Yes, hello, Tony D Pasquale through Pine Street. Um, so I just wanted to piggyback off of what Mr. Shi said about the, uh, the powers. Um, and I, I do think that, yes, they were not, uh, used as much as they should be or should have been during the whole remote learning. And there's just a clarification that I'm looking for. And, um, and, and it's, it's with the road back that Mr. Shi mentioned, that the state has put out with giving the powers more availability to do, to do more things. Um, where I was told by the Special Needs Administration that there's a board policy that says that powers are only allowed to be under direct, um, supervision in the classroom. And they cannot be allowed on remote learning. So I'm confused with that because I, I don't know, I'd like to know where the board policy is that states that, that they're, they're only allowed to be under direct supervision in the classroom and not on the, uh, online teaching. Um, and then when the, the state, um, you know, the way the, the booklet that the state said gave them more information, um, it was still told to me that, well, board policy states that they can only be in the classroom under direct supervision. So I, I'm trying to look for clarification where, you know, if the, if the board policy, if there is a board policy that states that, but the state says something, does the state super supersede what the board policy is? Um, so I, I'm just, I'm just wondering what the, the, uh, you know, really what the clarification is, what the powers are going to be allowed to do if we're gonna follow the state, if there is a board policy. So, I, you know, and, and if I can't get clarification, you know, right now, at some point, it would just be, uh, good to know, um, you know, what, what the powers actually can do, what they can't do. Um, you know, cause we do have a lot of them and, and, you know, they, uh, they should be used. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look into that. I would think, and Dr. Bragan, correct me if I'm wrong, if the state puts out a mandate or a, uh, you know, direction or whatever, uh, it would over supersede our policy if we have a policy on that.
I, I would defer to the board attorney, but I do believe state statute supersedes policy.
Yeah, the statute will supersede policy. Um, it all depends on what the policy says. Um, and then I think part of it will also depend upon what the board's plan says. Because right now, it's not just a board policy. And the language doesn't say direct in the classroom, it says under direct supervision of certificated staff. And that's what the, that's what the regulation says, um, for the Department of Ed. The Department of Ed hasn't changed the regulation. Um, but they have seemingly loosened, um, what a district can put in its plan. Um, as far as the use of power is concerned, what they will ultimately approve, we don't know yet.
Gotcha, thank you.
But if you look at the new roadmap, the language has loosened up.
There is a lot of loose language in the, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, so, you know, let's, we have, uh, over two hundred, some, I think, two hundred, over two hundred pairs, somewhere, somewhere around two hundred pairs. Let's make good use of, of their, their, their skills. Like, we, a lot of kids that need help, need extra help with this online learning. If we actually going to move into online learning, and even we have a hybrid model, but right now, we know there will, there will be some part of online learning. Let's make, you know, make, make use of their, their skills. They, they know these kids and they know the subject. Um, there will be a big help to, to, to our special needs students. And let's find a way to, you know, let's find a way to, to use them instead of putting a, 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 a roadblock to, to not use them. That's, maybe this is too harsh word, but, you know.
Couldn't agree with you more, Jerry. All right, yeah, Dr. Bragan will look into that with his team. All right, um, Jersey Watcher, name and address, please. Jersey Watcher?
He's muted.
Oh, you gotta unmute yourself. Jersey Watcher? Going once? Going twice, Jersey Watcher?
Hello?
Oh, there you go, name and address, please.
Uh, Crystal Edison, New Jersey.
Gotcha.
Am I recognized yet?
You are, you're online.
All right, good. Edison Board of Education has two or three sexual abuse lawsuits pending. Edison Board of Education failed to take reasonable steps to protect students from Frederick Berkeley, a well-known sex predator. Even after he was indicted for groping students between their legs, Edison Board of Education allowed him to continue to keep his job where he was able to groom even more students and sexually abuse them. Um, I'm against the left-wing radical agenda to sexualize the children. Governor Murphy, uh, the county superintendent, Kyle Anderson, the Woodbridge Councilman. They need to stop enabling racist sex spreaders, they need to stop with the, um.
All right, uh, Chris, so you need to stick to, uh, our stuff, not other towns.
No, we're in public comments, we're in public.
I don't need to hear about other towns.
Sir, the county superintendent, your boss is the councilman Kyle Anderson, I'm not speaking for other towns right now.
You mentioned Woodbridge.
Huh?
You mentioned Woodbridge.
Yes, Councilman Kyle Anderson from Woodbridge is your county superintendent. Superintendent Bragan's boss.
Gotcha.
Isn't Kyle Anderson your boss?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, may I continue now without being interrupted?
Sure, you got four minutes.
Okay, Loesman versus Riviera Beach, Florida, Supreme Court case law states you're not allowed to interrupt me when it's my time to speak. I would appreciate it if I'm, if I'm allowed to continue without being interrupted. Okay, I do have two questions. You can, last time my questions weren't answered, but maybe you'll answer them this time. Will coronavirus vaccine be mandatory? I wanna know that at the end, because against the USA Constitution, you can't do that. Why didn't the teacher's new contract contain anything about doing Zoom meetings? Or anything about online teaching? Now, I just wanna speak about the racist flyers in the past. Um, the Board of Education flyers, the racist flyers threatening to deport Indians and Chinese, Jerry Shi's campaign flyers disguised as racist flyers. Jerry, his running mate, the Stefano, admitted under testimony at the Committee of the Hall that Shannon Peng was the creator of the teachers' union flyers that People for Progress paid for. The racist flyers was also paid for by People for Progress. So it's obvious where it came from.
Excuse me, if I may, if, 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 if I may, sir, please? Uh, I just want to remind, I just, I, I just want to remind you that you can be held personally liable for defamation. Uh, so you need to know that when you make allegations.
Yes, I already know your, your Board of Education already got Shannon Peng's and Mahesh Bhagia's lawyer to file frivolous, uh, suits against me, but I'm gonna continue.
Go ahead.
Democratic Organization Chair Sharika Akhmad paid $5,000 for the stamps, this is all public record. So go ahead and try to sue me. Which was reimbursed by Mayor Tom Lanky, sent out by Councilman A.J. Patel's tenant Caesar Suarez, with Mahesh Bhagia crime family playing a big role, the conspiracy at Mahesh Bhagia's home, with Satish Pundi, the Board of Education bond attorney present, along with Deepak Bhalani, the porno star whose daughter does all the stories for the Board of Education. That's why they get those jobs with you guys, because they, they were a part of all this.
You have two minutes.
One person is guilty, but it's not just one person, it's a whole group of people and they all have one thing in common. The Edison Democratic Organization, they're all Democrats. And I want everyone to know that it's also the Democrats that they're behind sexualizing the, the children. The New Jersey Education Teachers Unions need to stop endorsing these Democrats because they're a part of this evil system. Um, the New Jersey Education Teachers Unions, Governor Murphy, County Superintendent, now, they don't just enable racist sex predators, they're allowing pedophile drag queens to come to the schools. They're allowing to teach eighth graders about anal sex and.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir. Uh, can you? Again, I wanna remind you.
Yes. Said some, if it's so inappropriate, why is it okay for you to teach the kids about anal sex, but I'm not even allowed to mention it?
We're not teaching that, but go ahead, uh, let him finish.
Actually, it's part of the state curriculum, it's part of the state, it's part of the state curriculum which you have to follow. Governor Murphy mandated it. Um, Superintendent Bragan, uh, did his rubber stamp on it. So, I mean, you could, you can lie about it now and say you're not going to, but you, you will be forced to. Now, my two questions were, will coronavirus vaccine be mandatory? I want that answered. And I also want answered, why didn't teachers in their new contract contain anything about doing Zoom meetings or anything about online teaching? Because what, what's, what's gonna happen is, these teachers doing the online meetings, they're not in person with the students, so mostly gonna have to be overtime, stay overtime, especially if, if they're dealing with special needs students. I mean, you got a class of thirty people, some of the students need help. Obviously, the class is gonna be like one hour, the teachers, say the teachers have to spend six hours for the whole day, whatever the day is. They're gonna end up spending nine, nine hours, ten hours.
All right, thank you, Chris, though your time's up.
How are you gonna address that?
Thank you. Okay, uh, to answer the two questions, um, one, we don't make that decision on vaccines. That's a, uh, probably a state or board, uh, state Board of Ed decision. And Dr. Bragan has been working with the unions on Zoom meetings and the expectations. Um, so it is part of our negotiations with the teachers. So I just wanted to answer your two questions, thank you. Mr. Baker, you're up next.
Good evening, Board President, Eriko and the rest of the board, Superintendent Bragan, appreciate the time. Uh, first and foremost, as we get ready for another great year, wanted to thank the teachers and school leaders across the district for all the great work they did. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Eriko, as you alluded to, sort of a quick transition to a new world of teaching remotely. Um, as far as I know, everything went off, you know, as smooth as could be expected. I know there were a lot of lessons learned and I'm confident, Dr. Reagan, your leadership to, uh, ensure the district moves forward and supporting the teachers, uh, and making sure our kids have access. and making sure our kids have access to adequate education. Wanted to ask a few questions. One, just as we prepare to return in the fall. Ralph, I know you mentioned you're seeing things on Facebook. I know everybody else is too. Just curious why this, why the district sort of seems averse to sort of town halls and forums? We seem to miss the boat in terms of the referendum. And I'm just wondering why we're missing that opportunity again to gather parent input in terms of, you know, things they're concerned about, what they'd like to see. I'm only concerned about just like the number of independent surveys that are popping up across Facebook. And I just want to ensure that, you know, you guys are getting the feedback you need to do. And just would encourage you all to consider a public forum, do some sort of town hall granted virtually to help increase transparency. Just a question if we've considered that. Last week, the governor spoke about the digital divide across the country, or across the state, about 250,000 students. The state came to realize there was a digital divide and just curious what the district is doing to help ensure that there isn't a digital divide in our great town. And the third is just curious of the board and the Board of Education in the district are aware of the Instagram account outlining some pretty serious allegations of racism throughout our district? And just wondering if the board has any comment on that. Thank you.
Dr. Bragan?
Put a lot in there, you know. I didn't look at the last Instagram account. I actually met with a former student, a Yale graduate, who is partly responsible for that. And, you know, we're, we're gonna meet with her and address some of the concerns that she mentioned that are mentioned in that Instagram account as well. I don't think the board, a few board members may be aware of that because I think she contacted a few. But as a full board, it didn't reach that level yet, because I don't have enough information to share. Regarding the, I forget what your other questions were, Brett.
Parents, parent meetings.
But apparent meetings in form, yeah, we'll try to set that up. You know, it's hard to have a dialogue when we don't have a plan in place. So we didn't want to just have a free forum. But when we did put out the survey, you know, the surveys went out to our parent community and we had almost 7,200 responses. And of that, there was probably several thousand comments, you know, where people felt we had a section in there to put in what your thoughts were. And we've used that information, we will use that information as well. We did the same thing with the teachers as well. Allowing the opportunity to put in their input that wasn't related to the direct questions that were asked. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hervenek?
Hello, am I live?
Yes, you are.
You hear me? Okay, good evening, everyone. So first of all, I'd like to mention, nobody's mentioned yet, in the board minutes, we have two of my colleagues at J.P. Stevens who are retired. Dr. Carol Bonamo and Patricia DeJoy Leird combined have over 77 years of experience. To what if you, actually Carol's in J.P. Stevens longer than I am. Patricia wasn't, but she's been teaching slightly longer than I am. Two excellent teachers, devoted staff members. And just like with the students not having a proper send-off for graduation, the same held.
You're breaking up, Matt. Can't hear you, Matt. Can I hear you? It's very, very low.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll speak louder. The other thing, second thing I want to mention, Mr. Barker, you do a great job with the cyber threats. Please keep sending them out. They're awesome to see and prevents a lot of bad things from happening to people. So much appreciated, Mr. Barker. Third thing, I want to jump on Mr. Bowden's and actually Mr. Eriko's before. As a member of and co-chair of the negotiating team, I did want to thank the members of the board for the time and efforts that you put into negotiations. For years, Mr. Mishat and I have been working together, I guess it's about 15 years now. And as always, I appreciate working with Dan and, you know, Ari and Dr. Bragan, et cetera, that were involved. Like Ralph said before, you know, when two sides walk away and you're happy about some things and unhappy about others, that's a good negotiation. I really do believe that's, you know, kind of the way it was. So I thank our team, I thank the board's team. And, you know, especially with the current circumstances, it was nice to come to a resolution prior to, with all these other issues going on and having this hangover all of our heads. So I was very, I'm very happy we did get this settled and ratified. So now we can totally focus 100% on the opening of the school year. The final thing I like, the final thing I like to mention, and it actually goes into Cristo's comments before. And that is working together with the opening of school. I know Ms. Polikowski and Ms. Mahabir have worked on schedules, et cetera, through Dr. Bragan. Mr. Bowden and I have been meeting with Dr. Bragan on a regular basis to discuss safety, return, you know, the roles of everyone involved and doing what's best for our staff and our students, you know, come September. As everyone knows, the dynamics change on a daily basis. And it's very difficult when things aren't set in stone. We're trying to look at all options. ETA on our part, Dr. Bragan knows this because I shared with him, with Ms. Bowden the information, we've also set up committees of teachers that have volunteered their time in the summer to also come up with their concerns, you know, work on what they feel is best scheduling-wise and how to best get the information and, you know, teach our students. So it is something that has been going on. And again, I appreciate Ms. Polikowski, Ms. Mahabir's efforts as well so that we can do what's best for the benefit of our students as well as our staff. But obviously, safety is always most important. Without safety, we're in dire situation. The final thing I just want to mention, I actually have in front of me as I'm re, you know, on here speaking, you know, and that is about what happened back in March. If you had asked me in January last year Zoom, I would have said, what the heck is that? Google meets, I knew what it was, I never used it. Yes, I did use Google Classroom and things like that. With our closing, within 48 hours, I personally, and the kids kid around me, I'm the Revenusaur, like a dinosaur. But in within 48 hours, I learned how to do a Google meet. I learned how to do a Zoom meet. Our staff development was awesome in helping the teachers along. So again, it's a learning, it was a learning curve for everyone, for teachers, for all staff members, for the administrators. And obviously, getting through this since March, you know, things are gonna be better, I'm sure, come September. But I want to share with you again, because I heard some criticisms before about teachers not meeting, et cetera. We just got the results of the AP tests. Our teacher was able to access them on July 15th, excuse me. And in our case, I have the, I teach the BC calculus and the AB calculus classes. In the BC calculus classes, 95.2% of our students scored a three or higher. New Jersey's average is 89%. So again, we exceed it. And, you know, people need to realize, we do have some students that take the BC test that aren't even in the BC class. Anyone can take the test. In our AB group, 9.9% got three or higher, where again, the state average is 72.9%. So again, even in a virtual situation for the two months, three months leading up to the test, our students did very well on it. So again, we did the best we could. Thank you, Liz, I see you clapping. I know my colleagues, we did the best we could under the circumstances. And I do thank the board and some people from the community even that reached out to me that said they thought that the virtual remote learning was somewhat successful. It's never gonna be as good as it is in person. But again, I think everyone involved did the best that we could under the circumstances we were thrown under. Yes, I guarantee it will be improved as come September. But I think again, people have to be a little patient, understanding. And, you know, safety, it's, you know, to me, it's the ultimate scenario that we need to go under. Okay, your time again.
Thank you, Matt.
For all of your efforts.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next person, we did miss one question from Mr. Baker. His question was about the digital divide. Dr. Bragan, if you could address that?
Yeah, absolutely. And we did have some students that had connectivity issues when we went to remote in March. And we made sure they all had connectivity. Again, Mr. Barker was on it right away. And for those that couldn't get connected, we provided devices as well, as well as hotspots for parts of town or where they couldn't get their Wi-Fi signals or where they didn't have the capability in their own household. So we will be extremely vigilant with that again this year.
Thank you. All right, Maria Orchard, up next.
Hello, and thank you, everybody, for attending this meeting. It's very informative. My first, thank you. My first issue, I guess, is if you can look at the schedule for next year, it's kind of hard to attend two Zoom meetings at the same time. If you could take a look at the schedule to make sure that next year, we don't have that conflict. The council was having a working session at 6 o'clock. One point I wanted to go into that not all students learn the same. Thank you for the opportunity for the virtual learning. Thank you, Dr. Bragan, for sharing the results of the parent survey. I like that idea about the principals phoning or doing like a connection to the parents before the next survey goes out. Wondering, is this opportunity, did you do any construction with the schools? In particular, that sidewalk and the road that's on Preston Street next to Edison High? If there's any construction opportunity there to do a sidewalk? Any update on the ROTC? I'd like to say congratulations to the J.P. Stevens Civil Cadet student that won the award.
Yes, and also, I'd like to throw out a shout out to, I think it is, oh, someone knows the name. A girl from Edison, she's a track star.
Casey Colletto.
There you go. Casey Colletto was accepted to West Point, appointed to West Point.
Wow.
Congratulations to Casey and her family. But thank you, Marie. But I think the ROTC, everything's on hold right now with this, you know, pandemic.
Are we reaching out to families to make sure that they have food during the summertime? I know we were doing the breakfast and lunch, but I didn't know if that was continuing.
Okay.
We are, we are continuing.
Yeah, my last, oh, sorry.
In the summer. The food is being continued and the meals are distributed on a daily basis at Edison High School and J.P. Stevens.
Okay, thank you. My last point is, what's going on with the referendum?
Nothing at this point. Right now, we're on hold based on, you know, the budget. Because we're under the assumption or understanding that in October, the governor may come back and revisit all the budgets throughout the state. So we don't want to make any decisions until we know our numbers.
Is there something like the parents can do to write letters to request that we get some support?
You can, but, I mean.
Tried that once, did it work?
Yeah. He's trying to get $10 billion to bridge the gap of the shortfall in the state budget. My guess is, if he doesn't get that kind of money, it's gotta come from somewhere. And I think schools are gonna get hit hard. So we're not making any major decisions at this point until we see our final numbers.
Okay, thank you so much for your support and your efforts. It's duly appreciated.
Thank you, Maria. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Amy, you're up next.
Hi, thanks, everyone. Amy Ryan, again, from Edison, Woodrow Wilson. This is my first Board of Education meeting, so I'm excited to have been able to participate. And thanks, everyone, for the good conversations. I wanted to add on a little to the discussion about the para that had come up earlier. And just as an additional piece of information, my son is on an IEP and has a one-on-one para. And it was added to his IEP at this most recent revision that if there is remote learning, that the para is not gonna be provided, that it's specifically excluded. So this is something, yeah, this is why I brought up the issue. And I've been speaking with Dr. Conklin about this. And any information that the board can help with on this regard would be really appreciated. Obviously, things will look different in the virtual environment. In fact, he probably needs less support than prior. But just to specifically exclude it without really any discussion was, you know, unnerving, let's say. So I'm excited to continue talking about this. And if there's anything that there are questions or information that I can provide from the parent perspective, I'm glad to do that. So thanks, everyone, again, for your attention to the topic.
Thank you, Amy. I will suggest to Amy, and I think Dr. Bragan will agree, if she would like to sit down with the administration, Dr. Conklin, child study team, whoever, even Dr. Bragan, that they be willing to do that and talk about it. Is that okay, Dr. Bragan?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Amy, why don't you shoot me an email with your phone number and I'll reach out to you. We'll talk about it privately.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bragan.
Can I quickly add something there?
Sure.
I just want to add, like this whole law about paras not being able to be there during the remote session. Could it be because nobody ever envisioned that there would be remote teaching of special needs kids? Is there something that the state can, we can reach out to the state that they change the stipulation? Because nobody ever imagined that we would be teaching in a remote world. So, I mean, just something to throw out there. If somebody could just go to the state and figure out like what's going on and, you know, because they might have never envisioned the situation.
Yeah, no, I agree. Maybe, maybe someone could reach out to the county superintendent.
Well, the roadmap already loosened it up. It's, I don't think the roadmap clearly say that the parent needs to be teaching under direct as a time when they're teaching the kid is being supervised, not super, you know, being watched by a certified teacher. I don't think the new guideline says that. So it should be okay for, if the teacher gives out the assignment and the para can work with it, with the student, one-on-one, especially in a one-on-one situation.
If I can clarify again?
Yes.
It's the, it's the language of the, it's the regulation. And what has happened is, in the, in the road back, it looks like the department may accept alternatives. But right now, that's not what the regulation says. An example of something where the department actually did it, a change in the regulation was, originally, they wouldn't allow, and the specific language was that you couldn't do the related services, OTPT speech, remotely at all. And they did change that regulation, which is why, again, that's something that may be able to be considered. I will defer to the administration as to that. And it's potentially, if it's something that's in your plan, that has to be submitted to the department, the department may sign off on it. It might be okay, it might not.
Okay.
So the hope, the question for you, if the new guideline comes out, and there's a, there's a regulation, which one oversees what?
The regulation.
Regulation always rules, overrules guidelines.
But the guideline, just near the regulation might be old.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter. They actually have to adopt a regulation or they, or they can do it in another adminis, formal administrative fashion on a case-by-case basis. So it all depends on what they're doing. That's why, that's why my comment is, if it's, if the road back is loosening that requirement, then, and because districts have to submit their plans to the department, it may be done on a case-by-case basis depending upon what the district's plan is in using, using the paras and overseeing what goes on with them.
Well, let's submit a plan that we want to use paras.
There you go. All right. Yeah, I agree with Jerry and Fal. We need to use the paras more. All right, Mr. Craigolo. Oh, I'm sorry, Fal, go ahead. Your hand's up?
No, mine was.
Oh, I can't see it because I have the attendees up.
Oh, Ralph, I would just like to say, at this point, I find it confusing because it depends on whom you're speaking to. When I went to a school board's WebEx, a number of people were asking the school boards about the utilization of paras. And we were told that as long as they weren't doing the initial teaching, that they were just doing support work with the students, the districts were allowed to do that. I think it's just nitpicking as to what they can do and what they can't do. And that, I think if we work that out, that they're in a support role, but they're more involved with the students, we'll be fine. It's just they're not doing the initial teaching, they're doing the supports. And that would be so much better for the students. Just like they did in the classroom, they weren't doing teaching, they were doing support. So this way, it would be remote support, not instruction.
Okay, let's find a way to use them.
Yep. All right, Mr. Craigolo, up next. Name and address.
Ernest Craigolo, 151 Vineyard Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. Want to thank all of you for your dedication to the students and staff. I wanted to give a shout out to the coaches of the Edison Girls Soccer Team. Coaches McKnight, Palicchio, and Morelli, who did an extraordinary job of ensuring the safety of the girls who attended the first two summer workouts. who did an extraordinary job of ensuring the safety of the girls who attended the first two summer workouts. Having dropped off my daughter at Edison High School, I was able to observe the girls wearing masks and staying socially distanced as they turned in their COVID-19 questionnaires and had their temperatures taken. My wife, my daughter, and I are very appreciative of the comprehensive efforts that were taken to provide the student athletes with a safe environment for summer workouts and providing the opportunity for these girls to get on the field and to spend time with their teammates again in person. I thank all of you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craigolo. Next up, Ms. Shonda Edwards.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, Shonda Edwards, 14 Melbourne Street. Thank you, everybody, for all of the work that you've done. I know that it's a difficult task to try to determine, you know, what's going to happen for the, for the fall and upcoming time. My question is also concerning sports, but more for fall sports. Have you, and I know that you have a lot of things to determine and you may not know the answer to this, but have you heard anything about if there's going to be fall sports? And if you do not send your child in, could they still have the opportunity to participate if there is anything available?
Okay, is that it, Shonda?
That's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bregan.
I actually think something came out today regarding football. And there is a plan for the fall sports to take place. So I think it's all very fluid. Shonda, we'll play it by ear as it goes on right now. As the previous, Mr. Craigolo said, they're doing the summer workouts now. And, and then we're going to have that two-week waiting period before we can kick back up in September, according to that, the phase plan from the NJSI AA. So I think it's fluid and it's going to change regularly. We'll stay in touch and we'll make sure our parents and our school community is aware.
Also, I think if, if the child does attend either physically or remotely, that child would still be eligible, correct?
This is an interesting world, but I do believe so.
Okay, well, we could check on that. But I would think if they're attempting and passing grade and doing their work and passing, just like any other school year, either remotely or in person, they'd be eligible. That's something maybe our ADs could check into.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Up next, I think it's Mr. Mishra. Name and address.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Ramakant. Address is 319 McHenry Avenue.
Welcome.
Thank you. So first of all, thanks to all of you, right? The board member, everyone, for doing all the fantastic effort for our kids. And I'm really kind of happy, kind of know that JP Stevens, they are having this, you know, graduation event tomorrow. And I'm also excited to attend my daughter's event. So that is very, very good things. And I know that you guys are putting a lot of effort to make it happen.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. It's not a simple thing to do. I have just only one question, which I heard a lot here, right? In our school systems, we do have some problem with the drugs. My question to kind of management here, what we are trying to do and what we are going to do in the coming season to stop that, or maybe whatever the issue we have with the drugs, to prevent that not to happen, are there something there to stop it?
Okay, Dr. Bregan?
It's a great question. I think when you deal with something like illegal drug use, it's a twofold approach. You know, the first one is you want to deal with any illicit use or abuse that takes place in school. And that would be through our, you know, discipline code and our discipline system to be proactive and not permit that type of use or distribution in the schools. But I think the more far-reaching things you do is putting proactive measures in place for students that need help, that are struggling, that try to provide those supports. As you saw on the board tonight, we approved the Rutgers Community University Health Program, Behavioral Health Program, to come in and provide supports for our secondary students and be there in assistance to our counselors to provide proactive measures for students to do things, to deal with their stresses that are lives and other things in a more proactive manner than, as opposed to turning to drugs. So I think it's a multifaceted approach. I think it's something we have to continually work on and be there for our students, try to support them emotionally during these difficult times so they don't have to revert to drugs. It's an ongoing struggle, though, I think, for all of our society.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Duncan, or Ms. Duncan?
Hi, I'm not a girl.
I'm sorry, Mr. Duncan.
Yeah. So Sandy Duncan, Nine Finch Court. I wanted to.
That's my address.
Why, why are we censoring individuals when they're talking at the public comments section?
Nine Finch Court, that's my address, sir. Edison? Did you say Nine Finch Court?
Yeah.
What was your address, Mr. Duncan?
Nine Finch Court. So why are we censoring comments from the public portion?
F-I-N-C-H Court, sir. F-I-N-C-H.
Is anybody going to answer that?
No, as soon as you answer. I'm asking you a question.
Hold on, Mr. Shee. Mr. Duncan, can you spell Finch?
Yeah, Finch, like the bird.
F-I-N-C-H.
Correct.
That's my address.
So I want to know why we're censoring comments at the public portion.
Excuse me, excuse me, you're using a false address.
Where in the sunshine laws does it say I have to use my address?
It says.
You can't use my address.
I can use whatever address I want.
You can't not use my address.
Go ahead, Tom.
That's my address.
Mr. Duncan, we're not, we're not censoring anyone, but go ahead.
Okay, so when somebody threatened the person, Cristo, about talking, he was threatened with a lawsuit that he could be sued for defamation.
Which is correct, which is correct.
No, he's actually bringing things up to the government. So that's not correct. And it's very limited what you could sue for, for defamation of character, which isn't even a lawsuit, it would be libel or slander. So that's not true.
Okay, that's our attorney's advice.
So that, so he, that's, Cristo is that attorney's client?
No, our attorney.
So why would your attorney be giving another person legal advice?
Sir, I wasn't giving him legal advice. I was simply cautioning him as a matter of the public. He was not cut off, he was not cut off, and he was allowed to speak.
You would get, well, no, he started talking about other stuff about Woodbridge. And you guys said he can't talk about other stuff. Lawyer, can he talk about whatever he feels like during the public comments section?
I let, let Mr. Duncan finish.
I would like the lawyer to answer that.
I will not give legal advice.
Wait, 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 wait. When he's finished, we'll answer. You have five minutes left.
Okay, so when Mr. Cristo speaks about Woodbridge, New Jersey, anal sex, intercourse, whatever he feels like talking about, Donald Trump, Black Lives Matter, the International Space Station, the public portion is his time to talk. You cannot take his time to talk away. Mr. Shee, did you, did you?
We're not going to answer direct questions.
That's fine, I'll ask it anyhow. Mr. Shee, put out direct, did you directly put out racist flyers? I think Mr. Cristo exposed you. And I think that I'll be voting for Cristo in the next election. And I hope others would join me because, Mr. Shai, you're racist. You're putting out racist flyers.
You're accusing, first you use my address, then you're accusing me in public forum? Okay, so if you have guts, put your real name and real address in there, okay? Well, I'm a public official, but I'm not going to take abuse by you, okay? I'm not going to take an abuse by you.
You are going to take it. You're racist, you're going to take it. So sit down, I live in Nine Finch Court, what are you going to do about it? Nothing.
You got three minutes.
You're racist. Mr. Shee is a racist, he puts out racist flyers allegedly.
I have to disagree with you, but go ahead.
Well, you could, again, you're cutting me off. This is my time to talk. So, so you could, you know, mute yourself and shut up.
No, thank you, I'll do what I have to.
Show some respect.
Mr. Shee, why don't you show some respect and stop being a racist piece of?
Cut him off, cut him off, Mr. Barker.
Cut him off.
Thank you.
Enough.
All right, thank you, everyone. The public portion is over now, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Jerry and Foul, thank you. Have a good night, everyone, thank you for everything, and I'll see you July 30th.